Second doctor's check Friday was they had to be scheduled out if it was something to do with urgency surgery.
Um, I don't know.
So.
Based on what he said previously, I'm expecting.
He'll also want to know.
The pink team. There are little examples that we.
They're.
Doing for.
We have records.
Are they physical?
I've developed the one for clicks.
I said, are they physical? Or are they?
No, this, these were just.
Well, the physical.
No, you know, well, my daughter and me, she's there years and years and years.
It's ninety-nine percent.
I took her out of.
And then I said, I should.
So. A T came.
She's got an inside track.
I developed the template.
It is.
It's like.
Going to be.
It's a physical terrorist.
Oh. No, it's, it's, uh, they, they started out with.
I give them up there.
With modern.
Yeah, and sometimes.
To be modern exercise. There's a couple that are a little bit serious, but most are.
More.
But they're, but they're working.
As you got.
Quad muscle. Okay. Muscle. So they're. And then trying to work on balance, stuff like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. How are you? Good. How are you doing? Nice job today. Yeah. The good news is my Rolodex still works. You didn't lose anything like a. No, the donation, I was late, so I have to apologize in advance.
Thank you.
I literally sent emails though.
My caller is usually.
Forty-five minutes. But they're already rolling in. They're literally make, they can make checks paid.
I wear.
So you're in the middle of me. Your Christmas presents or holiday.
I'm really, I'm really.
We're at the cheap seats.
Hi, Carol.
Just way in, way in the end.
Carol.
I would always sit up with a bias on.
I'd love to. No. People talk or not.
Actually, this is going to be.
Lucas, do you want to keep the sound on the TV?
Uh, up to you.
It's up to you.
Do you want to cheer? So.
Well, I'm on it.
I have to mute all last meetings. How do you feel? Whenever anybody.
That's.
Long haul process? Yeah, so if, if the sound's coming from there, then I would.
It can come from either one. Right now, I got it set to the TV. As long as you're not a. There shouldn't be, because that one's signed in.
Hello, happy Saturday.
Hello, I got you when you're repeating. Michael, you can hear us?
That's the meeting system?
Yes. Can you be tested here again?
Can hear you guys great.
Okay, thank you, Janet.
For Tom. I have never met you personal.
Nice to meet you.
My name is.
Hi, I'm Tom.
So I've got an internet connection for you.
Okay.
Let me upload my computer.
Looking good.
You?
I know.
You have a.
That is. Up pretty. The camera?
No.
You just bring up your trial of your attention at the end of three hours.
Well, that's what I was actually worried about last week. Down here, I put the laptop. It was like this.
And mine came off. What I wanted to hear.
Thanks, Eric.
Well, I think that. Yeah, I remember. You're. You're a warning here. Putting a lot of projects off.
Thank you.
Through the holidays. You guys ready?
Counsel.
And we are. So, Council, it is technically one oh three, so I'll call the meeting to order. We're here for our budget workshop. I sent out the more detailed version of that agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that.
Well, there's.
And I do want to say thank you to Michael to come out for the dollar prop earlier today. We had Jason join us and since no other counselors came out, we actually had former counselors. Rich Martin, so that was great. So a great event earlier today. We ended up, we can't say how much money you get, because of course, kind of those. Look to see if we can raise as much as we did previous. So, Michael, thank you for. Bill.
Not, not a problem. Just out of curiosity, Carol, do we still have Northfield Savings Bank?
Yes.
Okay, so I will be reaching out to them on Monday.
Too late. Can you turn the volume down this time, or is it both? Both.
I'm okay being loud.
So, Steve, I will turn it over to you, and we want to go over a couple of things to. Then, as you want, we can go over.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I, I really wanted to try to follow the agenda, and I thought that would be. Something like the search of the last of any years, two, three hours in the past. Assuming we can try to. Where we get. Where we go. So I thought that the first thing that made sense was for the council to. Establish or try to establish what is budgetable loss. I'd give them a couple of suggestions. I, but more relevant to me. Depending what the impact of the tax rate is, my recommendation is three percent, because look at what the expenses. They're. They're more or less directly related. I don't think voters. Were the budgets, but they paid attention to the actual increase. So that's, that's, that's the parameter that I used to work on for. Subsidiary. Proposal, and I think counsel is, is also the same. So. And when that's fair.
So in past years, we have tried different avenues as well, but we have looked at the cost of living increases that are currently going on. We're trying to maintain that we are at that level or below possible. There's been other years where we've looked at the services that we need it rather than add a tax rate and seeing if voters would approach it that way, of seeing what they would eat. So there has been different approaches, but in essence, it really does boil back down to what the manager is saying is. There's an amount that usually counsel is comfortable with, and feel the voters are comfortable with, and that's where we end up at before presenting. So I guess while they're working on that, are there any adjustments needed for the agenda? If you have anything else they want to add or. Mr. Mayor? Yes. I sent you an email a week ago with a cute little story attached to it. About some donations. Sure, I think the clerk was going to mention that, but I think because of the technical difficulties last week, you didn't get into it. So if you want to mention it, feel free. Is that, well. I still think I've been at, Carol does never wrong on numbers, but Carol misspoke during the council meeting when she talked about how much the. How much the, the parking amnesty program raised, she mentioned a five thousand dollar figure. And. So Karen and I, counsel, had the difficult choice of choosing between two very different, but very worthwhile organizations. So Karen and I offered to make a five thousand dollar donation to the Garden Club. And that would allow Good Samaritan Haven to keep the full proceeds of parking amnesty. The next morning, Carol contacted me and she said, I misspoke. The parking amnesty program raised about eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars. Well. And I responded to Carol, a promise is a promise. Karen and I, you know, said we would make a donate five thousand dollar donation to Garden Club, but. The inequity of that felt a little weird, so Carol was kind enough to be in touch with the Garden Club. My plan was simply to take our donation at the. At the parking amnesty proceeds to it and divide by two. The gentleman that I spoke to, and I apologize.
Gary Adamsky.
I'm sorry.
Gary Adamsky.
Thank you. Gary took him about two seconds. When I explained the situation, I said, well, I'm inclined to, you know, just throw that in, and he split it. And it didn't take him two seconds to say, no, the Garden Club would rather a full five thousand dollars go to the Good Samaritan Haven. And the Garden Club is thrilled that people will remember us with fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars. So. From our point of view, the easiest thing for, the council already voted to have the parking amnesty proceeds go to the Good Samaritan Haven. Saying is it's the desire of the Garden Club to see if they get five thousand, we'd be happy to write our check directly to Good Samaritan Haven. That will get it to them a little more quickly. And then the proceeds, the amnesty programs, be fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars could go to the Garden Club. But seeing as council already kind of directed. That, so I don't know how you feel about that. Yeah, I, I think if the intent was for five thousand with Good Samaritan, we could either do, like we suggested, or if whatever the difference is between. What comes in at five thousand, that part of your protein goes to Good Samaritan, and the rest of it is going to the Garden Club. It ends up being the same difference. So as long as council is aware of that, basically that the bulk of the money, which is fifty-five thousand, will go to Good Samaritan, the rest will go to.
Just to explain my error, because in fourteen years, I have been over the big one or two. The. I have conawayed the amount raised for the Christmas for Kids program and the amount raised for the, the major amnesty program. So that's where my confusion is at.
So there's no objection from the council. Sharon and I would love to just. Deliver that check to Rick on Monday, and then the proceeds, the amnesty program could just go to the Garden Club. Because those generally aren't accounted for until after the first of the year. And I thought with the holidays and the colder weather, maybe Rick could put that money to use, you know, sooner rather than later. That's all right with all of you.
Do we need a motion?
Well, it's not something that we're addressing today, because it's under public comment. And in the end, it's really just going to be a math. So if council's aware of it, I don't think we need anything to change anything.
Okay, well, I think, if I can understand this correctly. The intent would be to give the five thousand dollars to the Good Samaritans sooner rather than waiting until. January, when the money fully is accounted for. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I don't think that there's anything that would prevent you from doing that right now. If Tom wants to cut a check right now and hand it to them, I don't think there'd be anything that would prevent that. Sitting on a kitchen counter. Okay, well, thank you for that, for the public comment. Is there anything else for public comment? I've seen that.
So I'll suggest in the first place to start is. Like, I said, try to establish a target. Eighty-eight number, or it's somebody else right now. Walk into that maybe after the budget liberation, but I think in order to start wanting to. Making adjustments to the budget, the alcohol is higher than is acceptable.
I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but because we've now got it up on the screen and those who are participating. Via Zoom are off to the side, it'll be important that they actually raise, technically raise their hands so that they're highlighted. In case they have any questions or anything.
Rick, you see that there? Okay.
Thank you.
So let me know if, if the council knows.
If somebody raises their hands, if they.
Yes, they are the top.
They don't have the.
But there might be some people that have comments on the side if they can't use them, I'm sure.
Okay, so. That's my suggestion to get started and. I, oh, I, yeah, so I'm just about the budget reductions scenario that I sent out. There were a couple of projections. Maybe, maybe one thing, like on the side person, two, one, is maybe adjustments to the Republican presence. Was presented, the other ones to consider the use of a subsidy of a hundred thousand dollars or some amount. From the fiscal year twenty-one. So maybe.
Yeah, I think we can take that after the initial conversation. So, Council, we have heard of different projections. We know that inflation this year is probably more of the five percent. It's higher than it's been, what, thirty years, something like that. So that does affect our budget, just like it does everybody else's budget at home, so we need to take that into account because. As people's bills are going up, this is just another bill that's coming up. So the question is, do we want to keep the number at a recommended amount that the manager has suggested, which is three percent? Or is there something else that council wants to?
Just figure out.
I'm getting comments, and people can't hear you, if you speak up a little bit.
Do people mind if I take my mask?
Please take your mask, Bill. It would be really helpful to trust it here.
So the last data points we had, this one's fixed, the social security increase for, for Kelly was twenty-two, was five point nine percent. Inflation through September, we haven't updated this, but I don't think it's gone down. Through September last year was five point four percent, so that'd be. Couple of data points related.
That's what was that?
So I think that. In my view, we have a couple of non-negotiable big money items here. I view the Assistant DPW Director, the IT Administrator, and the problem in the junior planner are non-negotiable. That is, as the manager points out in his memo, that's. Two point. Four, three.
Ready?
Yeah.
I'm going to take the liberty of trying to. Take some tight control to this process. In my mind, those quite, those are very legitimate comments. To begin with, but I still think we ought to stay focused on right now, what is your, what is the council's objective for the tax rate increase? And then getting there will be.
So I think I just did it in reverse. That being said, that's already three point three percent. So we need to, I, I don't think we can responsibly cut much lower than three point seven five to four percent. That's something I would be more comfortable with.
In terms of, you know, your introductory data points, like the five percent, it's like five percent. For social security, I'm sure much of that's going to get eaten up by the health benefit that comes with social security too.
Yeah.
So that might come out even, and the other thing to consider is.
Yeah.
I've been hearing seven percent for inflation.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, it's, it's more of the data point that we had in there through September. And I, and I didn't mean to suggest, but anyway, whatsoever, that. Social Security adjustment five point nine. It needs plenty of latitude for a three percent number or something bigger. It's just a relative.
Counselor.
Sure, a question and a comment. One, do we know what percent household income has increased in the city in the past, or, or year, or what we would expect it to increase in the next year? And then the comment is, is that I, I worry about focusing too much on the tax rate because it is a projection. And it's based on an estimated rent list. We know there's a backlog of. Processing, assessing things. I know that the estimate this tax rate based off of. Is. Said to be a conservative estimate, but I also worry that it may not be conservative enough. You know, if we want to talk in more concrete terms, I think it might be useful to not talk about projected tax rate increase. But really just talk about what percent of the budget. Is. In terms of the percentage increase. Is on the table. Because.
It's all expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the other side, other factors that we have to take into is revenue increases, other than just from taxes. So there will be other adjustments that actually benefit the tax rate. So I, I think the reason why we stick with the tax rate is because even though it's an estimate, it's been pretty spot on. For, and it's conservative, if anything, it's going to make that tax rate even better. So for example, if that backlog gets caught up on, we're going to have more revenue coming in. With that tax rate being an estimate by the time the end of this is lodged, it would actually have to, we'd have a lower rate of setting what we need.
So my question is, for the manager, how conservative is the estimate? And what percent has household income increased in the past year in the city? In what pointed increase?
I, I do not know the answer to the second question. I don't know if the health group is on something I'm tracking. Conservative, yes, the average for the last few years that. Carol and Don booked at, I think, was a sixty thousand dollar, it was a sixty thousand dollar increase. Number that was selected was the estimate was forty thousand. And that's, you know, you're right, I mean, there's a function, functionality that relates to. The ability to manage rent, that's obviously a very big position to do.
Yeah, I don't know if we would have this past year's information ready, we have to go back over here, if we were to look up like department labor, market statistics. Other factors are, we were just in the data, and that's great, so a lot of people that were working, that's going to be completely different. That would be different as before. There would be a lot more people hopefully going back to work. I know there's a lot of vacant positions that are up there. Cost of living for minimum wage at least is going up on January first, also to twelve fifty-five eleven. So. That's also a. I mean, I can look at a, as we.
Yeah, I, I just pointed out this insensitivity to, even though there is inflationary pressures. Um, you know, not at all helpful for experience the. Increase. And I, and my suggestion would be under three percent. On the projected tax rate.
Yeah, just a reminder that, um, that household income plays, is an integral part of calculations of state payments. State rebate payments with regards to property taxes.
Yeah, and so the reason why we've, historically, we've looked at the. Rate of inflation also is because of. Counselor Shawn Bell was mentioning this. If you are on a fixed income, you're not having a wage, you're having that income that is based on retirement, so that's another category that would be. Being taken into consideration. I know.
As a question for Carol on income sensitivity to the municipal, the school tax.
There's also factors relating to homeownership. If you have less than a certain wage.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what this is.
So, but what I heard at the end is a number less than three percent. I heard from Counsel Waz that a number closer to four percent. So managers' recommendations, three percent, is there? Any other comment on this or suggestions for? Michael?
Yeah, so budget surveys in the past have been supportive of, obviously, one percent. They were always wanting one percent. But the, you know, beyond three percent, that's where it falls off. So my standard has always been three percent is where we should be at.
Does anyone want to make a motion, just to make sure we can just have a start, start from?
A motion for how high?
A percent increase that we're aiming for. I make a motion, no more than four percent. Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Uh, did you just say four percent?
No more than four percent, yes.
Uh.
So. I can invite House. So any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
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 I'm sorry, I need to make sure. I'm in question.
Sure.
Is, does this block us into four percent, or can subsequent motions come across the board to lower?
We can have subsequent motions after this as well. Right now, it's just kind of limiting the scope here, so we know where we're going to be at. So it was no more than four percent, so that would mean that right now we'd be looking at what was presented by the manager at first was over five percent, or close to five percent on the expense side. There were adjustments that were provided, so we can have those conversations, but just figuring out this motion for no more than four percent.
And I offered that motion because we heard from the manager and some counselors that they were comfortable with three or less. I was comfortable with closer to four, so I figured if we start at the baseline of no more than four, maybe we land at two point nine.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's in our negotiation process, we learn that as we go, that this is just a starting conversation.
So I take that as a yes.
Yeah, I have not, I have not reported a response yet from Counselor Shawn Bell or.
I had said, I had said aye.
Okay, thank you. So we pass.
Okay, so we're aiming at no more than four percent. That enough for you to get started, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, now. It's a matter of going through. I got two scenarios there. And not absolute scenario, there are two, because I. And not absolute scenario, there are two, as I said in the memo, there's many ways to get to a. Tax rate increase as a council. Maybe the first question to ask, because it was the second. Whether the council. Is. Really to have some, some amount of subsidy of the fiscal year twenty three budget. From fiscal year twenty one, or no, that's. And if you do, is it a hundred thousand dollars, which is my suggestion, that's a suggestion only. None of the numbers that come out. Be current numbers to lock people in. They were intended to be reasonable numbers to provide order of markets. Evaluate what they thought was appropriate. So I would say the next question, I apologize for this. The next question is, do you want to consider any kind of budget subsidy you're on? And I'm fine.
Counselor Chabel?
Being new to the process, I'd like to understand what the structure of the conversation is or the direction to which it's going into. I know the budget is based on the priorities list that came out from council previously. And I also think that there are some, you know, some big priorities. That. Are on the table, but I don't know if we as a council have decided what the top priorities are. For example, Counselor Wasak just cited the positions. And that's, I think, a fairly big chunk. And I think I had read when you sent one of these, I think it was this memo out that one percent. Is worth a hundred twenty four or something thousand dollars. So every, like every, what is the worth of every percentage? Ding. Like if it's a four percent, what's the number and how much of that is going to be accommodated by our priorities? I mean, to me, those positions are crucial. I think we have some staff members who are really struggling. Under the strain. And so what do we prioritize? I mean, to me, and not to sound slip or anything else. Some of that kind of thing is way more important than. Than the replacements for police cars or something like that. And I just like to know what our priorities. What we think is the most important things and what is a percentage. Going to do if we take it away.
You will get there as part of this process. I mean, we can, the council has given me no direct or explicit. Goals in terms of putting the budget together. There sort of is implicit. Factors that exceed in terms of, you know, staffing positions and so forth, that this, and this budget has been created to present. Beyond that, I don't think there's any other specific right to look up from the council. Regardless, you're at the point now where whether there's been explicit guidance or not. This is now the process whereby you're, if you haven't specifically developed a list of roles. You're effectively going to be doing that through this process as you decide the kinds of things that you were saying, you know. Staff, police cars, web. I would tell you, as manager, we need them all, but I understand their needs, their wants, and there's a, there's a practical. It's real, real limit work capacity, capacity factors. Before.
Just to add on to that, even though it's not explicit, what we set as our priorities, there are a number of items that have not been able to be addressed yet. And if you look at the bulk of the item, this isn't really to pick on Bill at all. It's just to say how much workload is in DPW. So knowing that workload and what hasn't been able to be accomplished yet this year, because, you know, it's a large amount of work to be done. I mean, that's where I think your point is valid, where we know where that position needs is. And I think that's where Counselor Wasak was initially starting this conversation. So our goals would be about those priorities that we have set for the staff or the manager. And how we want to fund those positions to make sure that those goals.
One more comment. In the memo that I appeared to be suggesting passed, if three percent, whatever. I tried to be very clear that there are four staff positions that could be justified in this budget proposal. I think there are three that are absolutely critical. To be honest, we just managed to try to get, to keep them in the ultimate budget proposal that's passed. That's the IT Systems Administrator, which we're actually trying to get into place now. The Assistant DPW Director, which is huge, the junior planner, the planning department. As far as I can understand where Jeff is coming from or the custodian. You have the last decision to resolve that issue. So that's a bangle cut. That I've suggested.
So Michael or Counselor Booton is the council coordinator. Counselor Booton?
You said me?
Yeah.
Okay. So realistically, these positions, are we really going to be able to fill them? And, you know. Are, do we really need the full amount for FY twenty three? If, if there's a possibility that we may not even be able to fill them, right? We're, we're struggling to fill the positions that we have, correct?
Yeah, but Counselor, you have to, you have to budget for the positions and include in the budget. I think play, there are vacancy savings that occur every year by virtue of anything from. Retirements to medical issues to whatever. But I don't think we should be. Having a budget that has a partial position just to, just to get to a reasonable number for the, for the budget. I don't think, I don't think it's a helpful plan. I think it's, I think you need to decide whether you, the council supports specific positions and then fully fund them.
So it sounds like this question is really related to, do we use the undidicated FY twenty one fund balance? And you found a hundred thousand dollars to buy down the tax rate for one year? And, and so it gets back to this, this list that we've been working on, of which. We've already committed to some staffing resources and IT administrators, right? And, and I'd be opposed to using that hundred thousand dollars to buy down the tax rate. One, because we have so many capital. And just in the equipment list, and we don't even have the, you know, infrastructure list really fleshed out totally. We know there are tremendous needs on infrastructure side too. And two, we have immediate staffing needs right now. And it may mean it can a premium to get successor or, or some, some assistance. In the public works or planning department. And we've already had this staffing conversation. I T, but we didn't have that staffing conversation for the assessment, the planning permitting assessment department. Or public works and also thinking about how do we scale up staff capacity for project management? So those are the things I'm thinking about with this, the wishlist. I don't like that term, but. Yeah, the list of things.
It's just a communication.
And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy that in tax rate.
Yeah, I'm going to just note that I would buy down the tax rate either. If, if anything, it just adds to next year's problem of trying to fill this out a reasonable level.
I'm not married to that proposal. It was an option. I felt an obligation for the council to consider it if the council decides.
My, my, I'd like to comment.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Steve. Steve paid me the highest compliment anyone could ever pay me. Because for years, when I served and we'd go through this process, Steve would never share his spreadsheet. He was always, always terrified that I would change it. And so I wrote to him recently and I said, look, I'd really like to dig into the budget. Would you just send it to me? I was concerned I didn't have the most recent copy. And he sent me this spreadsheet. So Steve, oh, that was gone. Well, okay, then you want to buy it. But man, I was, I was honored. I guess I look at a surplus a little differently. Council sets a tax rate to collect a certain amount of money and to balance a certain level of expenditure. And sometimes in some years, those expenditures are, just because of circumstances, are easier to manage than others. And I've always felt that if you end up with a surplus, it's no differently than sending someone to the store with $10 to get bread and milk. And they come back and they tell you that, well, here's your bread and milk, but milk is on sale. So it was only eight dollars, but I'm keeping the other two. So the city, you know, citizens very got their level of services through the expenditure side of the budget. But it didn't cost as much as the council anticipated it would when they set the tax rate. Now, just to give you a little history on fund, on general fund balances in the city of Barry. For the majority of my time of service, we couldn't keep a fund balance. It was actually in the charter that if, if there was any money left over, you had to immediately return it to the voters. I thought that was a little draconian at times because when the furnace went at City Hall or when a dump truck. That we didn't think would die for five years died that year. There was never a fund balance for unanticipated expenditures. So that made it very difficult. To run the city in time of a crisis when something broke that we hadn't budgeted for. So we lobbied, we spoke to the citizens about the need for a fund balance and said, we wish this would go away. So that the city could maintain, for example, eight two percent. And I think that was the number we actually used at the time.
I think it might have been five.
Might have been five. So, so, you know, my thought, my, as a citizen, I thought on the surplus. As I understand it, it's approximately five hundred and seventy thousand. I think it's prudent to retain two percent of the twenty two level expenditures, which would be two hundred and fifty six thousand. And then return the balance to the taxpayers, but do it over a three-year period. Because as some of you have correctly pointed out, if you were to, you know, bump three hundred thousand minus on the budget, you're going to, you're three hundred thousand behind next year. So this would, you know, it is amazing how old minds think alike. Because my number actually came out to a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and twenty seven dollars, not a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, it's a way, in my mind, it's a way to, to maintain a fund balance, which I think is just prudent financial management. But also. You know, recognize to the voters and taxpayers that this was, after all, your money that we didn't spend. And that would actually be a great segue into my next point if I may, Sir.
Of course, yeah. So, so the fund balance, like you said, is five hundred and sixty eight or five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We'll have the obvious number here.
I'm sorry, just a quick clarification on that number. Is that after the couple of things that council, small handful of things that we have previously?
No, 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 that's a gross number.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Just wanted to be charged on the thing.
My recommendation to council was, says I, two hundred thousand dollars for a fund balance. And then consider a hundred thousand dollars for a subsidy. And then I had a list that we can put it up if, but there, but there are other needs. That we have, and as is often the case, some of them were unidentified. It doesn't make, I don't want to be too. Cattle beer, but it doesn't make any difference how much money we do. I've been here for eleven years. There have always been, every year, expenses that have come up that were unanticipated, unbudgeted, crisis, whatever. And or we have a continuing need. I would, I would, I'm fine if the council chooses not to utilize any of the subsidy to go forward. But I would, it might be a little bit, a little bit different of opinion. I would, I would strongly recommend that the rest of that budget, the rest of that wishlist. Be used to, to. Address targeted expenses for needs that we have right now and nobody will. So the other items on that list. And quite honestly, if a hundred thousand dollars is used for. Subsidy, again, to find, slug it up, make the, make the fund down. Reserve two hundred fifty thousand dollars, put another fifty towards immediate needs.
So you had a second.
Well, I'm sorry. I want to jump ahead of anything. My second point was just that I believe the surplus might be significantly larger than. Then your numbers will show right now, recent being, under uses of ARPA funds. Cities are allowed to repay themselves for revenue loss during the pandemic or for expenses incurred during the pandemic. And as I, you know, went through looking at your twenty audited versus the twenty one unaudited. You know, between meters, the swimming pool, you know, swimming pool, somebody could argue, but I'd argue that the city took the opportunity during the pandemic. Say we might as well fix the pool now. It was passed by the voters because if we can't safely have people gathering anyway. You know, parking tickets, the auditorium rentals, certainly was affected, the BOR rental custodial fees. And then the police and fire special details. If you add all of those items up, just the difference between fiscal year twenty and then twenty one, thirty, thirty under twenty one. That's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So if I were auditing, the city and the city were safe, we intend to, you, you know, we've got a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in revenue that we lost. When to use ARPA funds as an auditor, I'd adjust, I'd say, well, that revenue loss occurred during that fiscal year. So I adjust the surplus up. And certainly, you know, I mean, just equipment that's in this room. You certainly had to spend a few dollars on email accounts, soup accounts, you know, technology. And I'm sure there's a lot more than that. I'm just not as involved with the budget. So I think, you know, again, and the reason I bring these two items up is because they may make it easier for you to hit that three or four percent. Because, you know, again, a hundred thousand dollars swing in the budget brings your budget down significantly on a percentage basis.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that a little bit. You're. We don't qualify for the revenue reduction. It is a formula that would be, that the feds put out and it's based off of your nineteen actual revenue. And then there's a four percent inflation. Calculator in there. The city doesn't qualify.
On any level.
On any level. Well, I'll review it with Steve. We don't have a chance to connect on that. And then I'm sure we'll talk about it in the council. But my. The LCT does a calculator that you put in all your information and then it does it from nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two. And the city does not qualify.
You've been on the, you've been on the BOR side of things.
Correct.
Which is forty percent, give or take, reduction. Now, what about the expense side?
It takes.
Well, some of those are funded by characters, right?
Correct. We did get characters at twenty. We got, we got quite a bit of corporate money, actually. I had a little number off the top.
Something moving to Counselor Booton?
So I think probably in order to move forward on this one, the question is, is how many of the counselors want to do the rollover into the budget? I would support rolling the money into the budget. So do we, to make the process move quicker, do you want me to make that motion like we did with the, the percentage?
You can go ahead and make a motion if you'd like.
So I make a motion that we move forward with rolling money into the budget and I, I'm not going to specify the amount just yet. So I'll make that motion. Just yet. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, moving second under discussion. Um, is there a reason why you don't have a dollar amount, Michael?
Well, because I want to see it underneath the 3%. So when I see it underneath the 3%, that's the dollar amount that I want. So roll over the amount that gets the budget under 3%.
Oh, well, then I'm gonna have to withdraw. Oh, Michael, I'm gonna withdraw my second. I think we'll get there, but I think it's too early for a motion.
So, but, but to discuss the fact that we're willing to roll it over, I think that's an, an important discussion to have and a vote. So I will remove the amount.
Great. Yeah, as long as there's not an amount in there, I will second your motion.
Okay.
Under discussion, anyone?
Yeah, I'd recommend the council voting on this. And that's because I think. There's, there's an opportunity cost for next year, uh, a new city manager that there's going to be a $100,000 gap to make up. The year after that, there's going to be another 83,000 some to make up for the current cost, cost grant. Um, and it puts the city in a long-term position. When we think about, you know, really what's driving the surplus, it's the. As I understand it, it's sustained staff vacancies and not perlo, just the staff vacancies. It's by and large, it's kind of the surplus.
No, I, I, I'm not probably close enough to the number these dones, but I would say no. Do staff vacancies contribute to. Fund balances at the end of the year, because then all the other expenses are. Yes, and it, and it happens every year. Uh, but I will say off the top again, not being exposed to numbers, it's done. This is the surplus. Came out of 21 was due to. The staff reductions that we implemented to deal with COVID plus all of the COVID related relief funding that came in. To me, those are the two big reasons I would defer it on.
Superlo program.
Yes.
And, and the, uh.
Yeah, well, I mean, there were, I don't know, half a dozen, dozen different. Revenue matters for care or cares. We got, we, we lobbied the state for reimbursement for utilization of the auditorium. That was a significant number to recover exactly.
So, well, I think that's a good point, but it doesn't, I, I think it doesn't change my underlying thinking that. Really were the, the, there's been, um. A service gap that we're trying to make up for right now. And there are certain staff members that are just really incredibly overlooked. Uh, behind on updating the grant list. And I think, um, that, I, I think that there's an opportunity cost. Um, that we need to, we need to address right now, uh, with this, um, surplus and not carry it into the next fiscal year.
Counselor wants to say?
Yes, so, um, sorry, I just. Sorry. So I agree, um. Taking a step back, I think that I, I agree with the, the image of the bread and milk that Tom provided. You know, I think that when you have a budget that comes with a surplus, that is an opportunity for spending. But when I'm putting together a household budget, if I have more money left over one month because of. The grocery sale, I'm going to put that towards next month's bills and that's how I look at this. But I also think that if we did not have a good chunk of ARPA money, I'd be 100% counselor hammer. And I know that we are restricted with what we can and cannot spend on ARPA. Uh, but there is going to be long-term cost savings in terms of infrastructure capital project that will be able to get done. Uh, because of the ARPA opportunity. So that makes me more comfortable using not all of this surplus in one year for a buyout. Because I think you're right, that would be a horrible sticker shock for next year's budget. But if. Forgive me for being so presumptuous. But using just $50,000 of this surplus and including the three positions that we've been talking about. Just using 50K, we can get to 2.995%.
I just, the thought that just occurred to me. You know, I appreciate that you sound like you have long. Or a subsidy. Um, addressing some of my current concerns that. Four years, I guess, no. Which the new is. Dedicate $100,000 of that future budget, would allocate $50,000 to next year. So you have an increase.
You're breaking up when you're talking. Like I, I feel like you're talking, but I can't hear you.
So what I was suggesting is another option for consider the use of a subsidy would be through over multiple years. subsidize the 23 budget with a $50,000 allocation, the 24 budget with a. About $30,000 allocation and then the, uh, 25 budget with $25,000, $20,000. So you, you, you don't have that wall. In the next year. It's an, it's an alternative approach. It may not address supersenses.
So I'm not opposed to that.
Hold on, Michael.
I move that we just start with three. We're doing with reviewing budget reductions and see where we get to and then come back to this question. Cause I think we could spend hours on this question, but if we start with three, we're looking at, then we'll have a different figure to start with.
3% as a.
No, no. agenda item three. That is a far better place for us to start with and then see what we.
Well, I mean, that's effectively the next step. One at first. That's fine.
That'll be my need to defer decision on this and to move to item three.
So there was a motion on the table, but your motion is to basically cable this item until after we discuss. Yes, there's a second for that. Seconded, given it's not available, all those. All those are there, given the discussion. If I say hi.
Let's stay with discussion.
Yes. So, um.
Uh, nay, just as a side note, nay.
So, uh, with that, that was two events we were to address first and then we're going to move on to three anyway. So Steve, if you want to just move into that, we'll come back to the.
Yeah, so, uh, Dawn. But let me just watch you through this to both see if we're understanding.
Wouldn't that help?
So, um, Counselor Eric, to answer your question, it's one of the information website. Um, so the numbers reaching 2002, 19 to 20, there was an actual increase in wages of 9.6% overall. Uh, for the private sector, that was 10% and government with 7.4, breaking that down for every state with 7, 28% and local with 9.1%. But along with that, we also have to note that there was an 8.7% decrease in the number of people working. So we just went up, but the number of people working went down. So that's all going to be taken into consideration. Um, and the minimum wage is going up from 11.75 to 12.55 and that's at 6.8%.
Okay, so, uh. Following up on. Council stock wall suggestion, okay, so let's start looking at. Line item reductions. This is, uh, this is the scenario that I put out. The, the 27th November. It's not absolute, it's not an all be all, but folks were. I went through the same process that you folks were with up through as part of this exercise. You get, you go through and you view the line items to say. Some potential savings here, some potential reduction there. These, these are the ones that, uh, I suggested. There are others, but. I don't know. We want to get there is to go down through this list that I suggest. Say you agree with it, you don't agree with it, a different amount. I mean. Get. Get to a point where. There, we'll get to a point where you have a, uh, expense reduction. And then we can decide if we need to find more or if we got to.
So just to start on this, and then I'm going to recognize Counselor Stockwell. Under the eliminate, so basically you're saying, um, this position is one that you feel is not, you get this fine. You'd like to have it.
Well, I might say a little bit different. It would not result in the same. Uh, I think we need it, but we have to make. We have to make painful decisions about, about getting to a budget that we think is affordable. I have to make those painful decisions or recommendations as much as you as individual councilmen who have to make painful decisions about individual lines. So that results in.
Initial decision. See, I just want to make sure to clarify before we move on. So Counselor Stockwell.
I'm wondering, so we should, I think we should go through this and should we ask for other suggestions like?
Yeah, I, 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 I thought what would be helpful. We can first continue reading. Just because you have a list in front of you, just go through that list and see if you agree with those or not. And then at the end, we can tell you what the reductions are. And then if we don't get to where we need, then we move on to. Go through the rest of the budget and frankly, I'm sorry, but frankly, even if we went through this list and got to where, okay, that basis is 3%. There's nothing that says can't go through the rest of the budget and see if there's some more to squeeze on.
Yes, and I'm wondering if some of the expenses would be like, I know we need new patrol cars and that's fine. Is there a slightly more, a slightly less expensive model that would be as good since I said?
Well, just so disorders aware, I mean, the, uh, this goes back to the discussion that, uh, Counselor Hemric brought up quite some time ago. But, uh. Patrol cars are capital expense. That is not in here. Now, I've had it in former budgets. I realize I talked out of both sides of my mouth, but. I finally did convert it. So it is a capital budget, uh, item. There are reasons why I did it, but there's no need to go into that. The bottom line is the, the capital expense, the $65,000 capital expense for a cruiser is not in.
But in the other part is there's a minimum specification. So when we go out, there's a bid process. And that's what it usually comes back at. So it's really not just the price of the car, it's also the price of fitting it up with all the equipment that's needed by the officers. And that's why it tends to be more expensive than say if you were I were.
Thank you.
The only suggestion I have, I mean, for some of the things on here, they sort of seem straightforward to me. But with some of the others, city hall custodian being one. Trying in a quick snapshot of what's the real loss? You know, what, what would have been gained with it? What's the real loss over, you know, et cetera?
I mean, the, the, the principal impact, I think, is on staff internally. Uh, it's just the housekeeping and upkeep of the. Upkeep of the facilities or try to. Split custodian time between city hall and public safety building for various reasons that hasn't worked. Uh, and to some extent, it's the appearance of, of city facilities to the public.
So in essence, when you come into this room, you know, sometimes you'll know that it hasn't been backed. There's wires that are around. Uh, that's one thing for consideration. The other is, I think there's a contractual obligation for cleaning down the public safety building that was part of the.
Yeah, with COVID related, that's what we lasted at this point, but.
I would just like to advocate for a city hall custodian being that I work in this building every day. I just see that what we have right now today on staff, we have two individuals. They are both swapping their schedules because it's up with the BOR for ICE. Um, so that means they're very limited time in city hall. So like our bathrooms, it's a public bathroom. We have to share that with the public, which is fine, but those aren't getting addressed on a timely basis. Granted, these individuals that are on medical leave will be coming back and that will alleviate it, but we have quite a few city buildings. Other than just city hall, but that means their time as well. And so that's just my.
Yeah, so my question on that is, rather than a. Position in our budget, if it is COVID related, would that qualify for ARPA funds? Because right now, uh, two physicians are actually on medical leave. Those people, that's be coming back. So could that be covered under ARPA for?
I would have a look into it, but that's a good, good possibility.
I was just going to echo what, what Dawn said, um, not only from the selfish point of view of the fact that I work in the building. Um, but also because this is the building that is most frequented by the public and serves the public and. You know, if services aren't being dusted or evacuated or moving into the part of the season where, you know, where people are dragging soul. From the streets and, and it just, you know, it, it not only is, uh, putting a bad face on the, the city. Um, public spaces, but also, um, not maintaining our, our facilities.
Jeff?
So it's, it's not just a custodial position, it's a maintenance position. Um, granted, yeah, there is custodial work that they perform. But it's the overall upkeep of the building. I mean, you know, right now we have a lot of issues in, in not only city hall, but. At the public safety building, um, at the auditorium. I've been here, it's going on 15 years and from day one, I've said that. This department is woefully understaffed. You've got five full-time employees. Taking care of all these buildings and grounds. Um. And right now it's the perfect storm. I've got two guys out on medical leave, not COVID related, it's personal stuff. I had a guy who takes his vacation during deer season, so he's been out. So for the last two to three weeks. I'm operating with two people and, and they're on the split shifts at the BOR. So. There's, um, one building being fully taken care of and four buildings being neglected. And now when I look at this reduction here, uh, if you look at that 141,000. $70,000 of that is specifically related to my department. The city hall custodian, the buildings and grounds maintenance at the public safety building. And the seasonal cemetery staffing. I mean, we got. We brought a few guys back this year. If you remember the summer before, we had no one, the complaints were rolling in. And now if we can't take care of the buildings, the complaints are just going to get deeper. So just want to put that out there.
Yeah, so, so. Jeff probably feels like. Sorry, Jeff probably feels like a single wow. I did, makes a good point. Uh, I was looking at suggested reductions individually, not necessarily based on relative to the departments or so, so. I mean, as it speaks to the, uh, $10,000 reduction and it seems on cemetery staffing, uh. Everything we operated, part of the, part of the reductions we made, which you folks have heard about. Uh, is the reductions of the summer seasonal staffing for cemetery maintenance, which really had an impact at Hope Cemetery, which is the. The architec for everybody. Uh, so with this budget, we're, we're restoring, we're bringing the $30,000 allocation up to. Up to 50,000, uh, I plan for us. We would be to restore this $10,000 of the fiscal year 24 budget. I, you know, I, I empathize with Jeff. I mean. A lot of these items that, that go directly to city operations, uh, yeah, they're. They are. Take, look at the summer bike patrol. Summer bike patrol hasn't made it for at least the last two, not three year budgets. Everybody wants it. It's a great public relations. It's a whatever, but it, it boils down to. What do we need? What do we want and what can we afford? And, and if we're, if we still need to get to the 3% range. If you, if, if you find that some or all of these aren't acceptable. Then you better find that somewhere else. Again, I'm not suggesting this is the absolute best, but just appreciate that if some of these are painful. Uh, maybe equally as painful, uh. You know, the, uh. You know, the grant spatulons. We, we bumped it this year, or I'm sorry, from 10,000 to 20,000. Well, that's. An arbitrary adjustment that has a, that has a valid basis for knowing it to, to try and double it, but. It's not a, it's not a hard expense. In some areas we don't want to end up using it. So it's just an arbitrary. Suggestion to reduce the increase from 10,000 to 5,000. So it's just an arbitrary suggestion to reduce the increase from ten thousand to five thousand. And I could go through that with all of those.
So then hopping back to, I mean, City Hall Custodian, we first have that, they're saying there's needs. Website, just to get to the next one on the list. Oh, go ahead, Michael, sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, first of all, can we, let's just talk about, um, City Hall. I've heard complaints about it, that it, it does have issues. Um, the question that I have for you, have we thought about contracting with a, a company to do some cleaning in the City Hall area?
I'll let Jeff speak to that, but yes, we have, and there's nobody else.
And then I want to follow up with an additional question.
Michael, I did, because I have the two people out on medical leave, I reached out to a couple of contractual services in the area, and they could not take it on because they don't have enough staff to handle their current contracts. You know, with the hiring situation the way it is, they just don't have the people. And I had to get union approval to bring in a subcontractor, uh, but we did try and we couldn't find anyone.
Okay, and then, yep, the next question regarding an item for Jeff would be the seasonal cemetery staff. I see that, and it just, my initial thought is, hell no. Got to be careful when you talk about cemetery. Um, those are, that's where our dead loved ones are. And, um, I, I would like to know what kind of impact that's going to have on, on, uh, you know, our, our cemeteries. And if it's going to have a negative impact, and, and if I get one complaint about, you know, someone's stone or, or, you know, their, their cemetery plot isn't good because of a, a decision that, that we made, that's, like I said, these are our dead loved ones and we shouldn't be messing with that. So I just, I would like to know what kind of impact would, that would have.
Well, we went from, two years ago, we had zero summer help. We used, um, we used the city employees when they came back off furlough for a while. Um, two years ago, the complaints were numerous. Last year, we were able to bring in, um, I brought in four, four or five summer people. Uh, the complaints lessened, but we still didn't have everything, you know, one hundred percent covered. You know, Hope was the, was the focus, uh, Elmwood was, was fair, and St. Monica's was probably considered poor. But, you know, typically I have eight to ten summer people to keep all these cemeteries and the parks and playgrounds taken care of.
So Michael, to provide you some relativity, uh, if we cut ten thousand dollars and only funded fifty thousand, that's still a twenty thousand dollar increase, uh, in the seasonal staffing, but then we have this issue, so it increases by two-thirds. So there, there should be a notable improvement that will get us to perfection.
So the follow-up to that, Jeff, is during COVID, when we had a limited number of staff, did, were there any types of efficiencies that were found in the way of operations that were happening in order to get some of that work done?
Not really. We had, we were using our people, um, well, by our people, I mean, we were using facilities people to do the cemetery work.
So are there items on here that people have questions on? That's for you.
Yeah, I think my only question really is on the reduced, uh, traffic signal maintenance. Uh, I, I hear a lot of complaints already about traffic signals not working, possibly working. And I think that would be like the biggest thing I have an issue with. I, I do hear Steve saying that, you know, if we don't do one, we have to find another one. But I just hear a lot about traffic signals, how they're working, maintenance, et cetera. I think cutting that would just, just be really harsh for people.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate that, I mean, I don't know about Bill, but one of the biggest headaches that I've ever encountered is traffic. So I, I really thought that they could take care of it. I'm careful what you wish work for with the technology. So, uh, I had increased the, or Bill had increased the allowance, Bill, what was it, the fifteen or twenty-one? So, and, uh, you know, on the top, right now, like, I don't have the line items. But it's not like the, it's just an allowance. And it's a hedge against the unknown in terms of what, what problem will happen, uh, you know, twenty-three, what problems twenty-three will happen.
Well, I mean, just to speak to Councilor Reel's point, um, trying to be at that Eric Church thing where we've had issues in the past. I was there yesterday and I sat through three cycles before I had to turn on my blinker deck to get back from the other lane to come back to Spaulding on the other way. And I'm not sure how often it happens or hear those complaints, but I know that, that wasn't a huge that happened. Um, Councilor Stopover first?
If we reduce something like the part-time officers allowance, and they do know overtime, that essentially is meaningless.
That's potentially.
Yeah, essentially meaningless in the fact they do. I mean, you can do.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, just, I mean, just so going back to some basics, a budget is a budget. Is, it's, and we develop that through our best judge on individual lineups, uh, considering historical expenditures, audit expenditures, any, any, uh, knowledge of a reason why that must, that might be increased or possibly even decreased if we think we're not going to need a budget as much. I think what drives this much on individual lineups was a historical trend. Where, 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 where you're here, but that's, that's better than just playing guess. So, um, where I've used the word allowance, that's what it is. There, it's our best, you know, as we spent, uh, the months of, uh, July and August and September, we're at the staff level, going through the budget development of, with individual departments, going through individual lineups. And there's the best likely judgment. The, uh, department head, uh, Dawn, myself, if you go, so we end up with any of these. So, uh, so the reason why I feel there's some elasticity in allowances of, is, is that they are best projections. In most cases, they're not based on, uh, you know, we don't, we don't know with the part-time officers or speech or that's, that's reactive. It depends on, uh, people requesting a contract, you know, blue light details, things like that. So it's not like these are hard expenses. We know we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars in, uh, police overtime. If, if twenty was the number, I think it was, uh, I'm just, I'd say, well, that's an allowance. It's not hard and fast, but it's, it's twenty thousand, it's seventy-five, uh, maybe worse than twenty. And then, and then the other thing to keep in mind is that, except for hard fixed expenses where we know, uh, what, yeah, if we're correct. For instance, the BYCC stipend, uh, that's in the past, that's been a commitment on the private council each year. It may be a seventy-five hundred dollar commitment, so we know, we know what that expense is. But, uh, in probably ninety percent of the budget lineups or more, that aren't fixed expenses, uh, we never end up developing the budget. We do a little bit over. Uh, and, uh, such things as vacancy allowances that we know are going to occur. We don't plan on them, but we know that they're going to occur. Uh, provides some contingency, some bottom line contingency in the whole, uh, in, in the whole budget. So this is a thirteen point four million dollar budget. I always, I always try to, uh, I've been able to, this is, but I always try to sneak in a little bit of contingency. And that's just the latest expenses line item, which, uh, usually, usually every year, somebody throws in. Uh, the former mayor has done it in the past, and, uh, what we have in there, uh, what we have, have in there, I believe this year is ten thousand dollars. I'd say what, maybe twenty thousand dollars.
So the reduction is really after we've done, really budgeted and we've actually increased some of the line items, that reduction is in that. So.
Yes, yeah.
So all of those, we just did move the lineup as far as what, all of those lines?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, but I, I think it's, it's good to hear Steph speak there on the need for the City Hall Custodian. It seems like if that's there, I think it's hard to talk about the staff position in isolation from the Assistant Public Works Director or the Junior Planner, uh, which are the two key step, uh, staff members in this budget. Uh, and also thinking comprehensively about our, the city's economic development program, which, uh, goes in, uh, really in three different directions. One, there's a city staff role with, uh, with some economic development function. There's the BADC and there's the partnership. Um, and, and I think hearing from Paulie was helpful, talking about, uh, Kevin Casey's role in Montpelier, I know Heather Carrington's role in Winuski, uh, Chip Sawyer's role in San Francisco City. These are all kind of comparable municipalities to us. They keep that in-house, they've had really successful, uh, grant list growth progress. And, uh, and that's not to say that, uh, that the investments in the partnership, BADC are valuable. But it is, thank you, but there is some thought in this budget about expanding some planning community development type functions. And it sounds like this council has, um, has kind of indicated an interest in using ARCA money for, um, some housing investment to grow the grant list and, um, some infrastructure investment. And none of that money, um, can, uh, be managed without staff capacity or unless you're, unless it's going to be handed over with some admin cut to a third-party organization. Um, and so I, I kind of think that there's an opportunity to think about these positions through the lens that there's going to be some project management that could be billable, uh, back ARCA. And maybe we could phase in these positions with, uh, with, uh, over, over the course of the three-year period, where they're recognizing that a Public Works Director, this Assistant Public Works Director or the Public Works Department is for sure going to have billable staff time to any infrastructure projects that are funded. Um, of, of, of planning officials likely going to have, um, some, um, some build back time to a housing program or other initiatives. And so maybe we can think about these staff positions through, uh, a split cost between some billable hours to ARCA in FY twenty-two and some billable hours to the general fund. And maybe there's a win-win.
So on that note, just for clarification for ARCA, um, if we were to use the DPW director for, uh, new projects versus COVID or older projects, is that allowed? So if new projects are, I mean, that's another position. So we could look at the City Hall Custodian, which is also maintenance, which if we're doing that for the COVID, it could be, uh, using some of those funds. Similarly, the Assistant, uh, DPW Director, the, the IT position.
Yes.
That could as well. Uh, so those are three of the positions. And then the planning, uh, position, I think, you just mentioned as well, since they're planning for these same items, I think that's also partially covered. So on that note, if, uh, we want all four of those positions, and there is a way to say in the first year, it's seventy-five percent ARCA, second year, fifty percent ARCA, third year, twenty-five. Basically, it's contracted, it's our contracts limit because of staff, but I think the goal is you have to have that, uh, no, or in place by the FY twenty-four.
You have to have the allocations made by twenty-four, the expense, the, the twenty-six.
So we could then, over that couple of year period, have those built into the budget by having each one of those positions partially funded by the general fund.
Yeah, I was just thinking that the risk here is that, and we haven't had an ARCA spending conversation or even a state of gold conversation, fourteen. But, um, but it does seem like there's some perspective overlap and an opportunity, uh, to create some win-wins. And it would obligate a future council, uh, to a certain course of action, uh, which, uh, which can be good and bad, right? Um, because you want your council to be responsive to the, to the voters, uh, what their, their priorities are. So, um, I, I just think it's worth, I think, yeah, it's worth talking about. And, uh, I think we can get to a lower tax rate, um, thinking that way. And I think we need the staff capacity to move ARCA funds for project management. We know we have some water needs, tremendous stormwater needs.
By the way, I'll just point out that, uh, you know, finished up this capital plans for streets, water and sewer yesterday. I have them posted on the website on the student scroll. That may not be the final haul, if you want to, uh, maybe pull them up here today if we get that far. But I just want to make sure you know, those capital plans.
And I, and I just really think, final thing, I, you know, I know we have this junior planning position, but I almost wonder if we don't need a full-time community economic development specialist on staff, um, chasing down, uh, grant funds, uh, helping manage projects in addition to, uh, a planner.
Yeah, and I guess part of it is going to be the job descriptions for some of these positions. So Bill with that assistant, uh, each of the directors be doing some grant writing, for example.
Sorry, it's clearly focused on the, the project, uh, of the house, and that could well, some grant rate certainly is this project development is describing projects. Getting prepared.
Michael's had a scree.
Thank you. And, and I just noticed that Janet has her hand up too. I, I, I just have to ask this question, or what I just heard, I feel like I just heard we're talking about putting a portion of what the partnership does and BADC in-house? And is that going to equate to lowering their budget amount that we have? Because that's, that's kind of what I just heard, and I just want that to be clear in my mind. And if that's the case, if we're moving in that direction, we absolutely have to have them in here because that's, that's, that really should be a conversation that they're aware of.
So I, I don't know if we've made that as a decision. I know that, uh, Tony has actually stated that he would be willing to take on some assistance with ARCA funds. I thought that he manages it, but he assists with those programs just like he assists with other programs in the city. So I think that's more of a program.
I didn't hear.
My guy wasn't suggesting, uh, putting those budgets on, uh, on the block, but, but, but talking about how, thinking about how they overlap and, uh, and what is working in other communities, um, versus how we're doing things.
Janet, Midcaro.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, I, I just wanted to, to reinforce the fact that, um, Steve and I have been talking about trying to get my office not only staffed back to the way it was, but I've been looking forward about adding a planner now for a while before it ever came up at City Council. I do a lot of grant work and I enjoy the grant work. And hey, in a perfect world, if I could get that planner, that junior planner now, um, I would be euphoric. Uh, if I could get an assessor now, you know, that would be a wonderful thing. Um, but I wanted you all to know that, you know, I've been here nine years and we definitely need that, that's, but, but I also want to, um, toot my own horn and say that I've been doing a lot of this grant CD work. Intimately involved in the, in the grant portals and the other people that are using the city as a pass-through. And, um, I, I would love to be that person if I could get everybody else in my. And I, I would love to be that person if I could get everybody else in my office that ramped right back up to where they need to be. Cody is, is absolutely a benefit to the city, but he's 50% dedicated to Berry City and 50% to Berry Town. I know that the partnership's mission has one tiny little line item about development. I don't think that, that, that should be the partnership's mission, certainly involved, but not heavily involved, is, is what I'm hearing. So I wanted you all to know where I foresee my office and where I have foreseen my office for the last two years. When the council voted to get rid of the assessor, it was a clear moment for me to see how things could change, how we could morph things and, and do what other communities are doing. So I just wanted you to know that. Heavily involved in grants and truly enjoy it and just wanted you to know that, that's all.
Yeah, let me, let me add to that. I think over the last three or four years, maybe longer, among all the other things that Janet does, in my mind, she's morphed into what I call the grants administrator in city hall. There's not a grant that we get that doesn't go by her desk. I specifically, if I see that she hasn't completely included an announcement or whatever, I make sure that Janet sees it. It doesn't mean she absorbed the full responsibility for the grant. She is the one piece of administrative grant consistency that we bring to our grants management. And the other thing is, every one of the, we don't have grant. Grant developments assigned to just one individual in the city hall staff. Every department had as a, as a primary role to be alert to grants that are falling into their area of jurisdiction and then taking the lead, coordinating with Janet to pursue those grants. So every one of us in city hall is a grant writer, among a hundred other things, but so we, we, to the extent we don't have somebody as a development visual, we still do our best to get the job done. Doesn't mean for a second I wouldn't want to have somebody who does, does manage a development visual and just expand the team. But I just try to make sure you appreciate that we all individually do a lot of grant work. And I think it's been reasonably successful.
Carol.
Just, I, I hate to play devil's advocate, but just want to point out a couple of things. By using ARCA funds to help offset the, the costs associated with staffing positions like custodian or positions like the IT or planning position to the, and the DPW department, we're kicking the can down the road, similar to the cops grant. At some point in time, the city is going to have to absorb those full costs. And so that needs to be part of the plan too. The, the second thing is with regards to grants and hiring a, a grant manager or someone to, to go after and, and manage grants, it's a great idea, but again, grants don't pay for those positions. It needs the council and the citizens to make that investment in that position. So don't think that by getting somebody on board who is building grants, then they are, that the money that they are raising is paying for them. There are other ways, hopefully it grows the grant list, hopefully there's, but, but the nutshell, it's the council that needs to make the decision to invest in that full-time position in the general fund budget.
So this may just be me, but I'm, I think that the council collectively needs to make a decision as to whether or not we're putting in these four positions. All four of them at once. Those are really the only big ticket items that we're playing with right now. I think the next biggest one would be the summer grant for total 25k. But I'm having a hard, hard time figuring out how to approach any eliminations until we know whether or not these four positions are in or out. If they're in, that's 2.92% increase. That's just, that's where we're at. So if we are including all four of those in the general fund, we're already knocking the door at 3%, we can't pass that. If we want to explore ARCA options or surplus options, that's fine and we can do the math and figure out how we're going to go from there. But I don't see a way for this council to move forward on a final budget until we can agree what's going to happen with those four. Maybe that's just my take on this, but I think that's, I don't see how else to do it.
If it's. Counselor Shumbl.
In my view, this may be a hasty idea. I'd like to make a motion that we include all four of those positions in the general fund.
Who should say in discussion?
With or without the expectation that they would be ARCA funds?
Without, for now, without the expectation that they be ARCA funds.
So and just to follow up on that, so those four positions, if you add them together, they're 296,300. So if we were to look at 25% of that number, that's 74,000. It could either be that that is the number 74,000 first year, if you want to try to use ARCA funds over time to have that be funded, but then we also have to realize that those funds will be over for a half a year here because it goes from here now to 25,750% funded if we were to do something like that.
I just want to point a clarification. We technically have five positions. So are you not counting the?
This is the IT system administrator.
Sorry. I just took a custodian. I was like, no. I'm sorry. Oh, I screwed up, sorry.
Counselor Boone, is your head up?
Yeah, so the motion on the table is to maintain the four positions, the IT, city hall custodian, assistant DPW and junior planner, is that correct?
Correct.
So, and that puts our tax rate at what?
Say that again, Michael.
What does that put our tax rate at?
So we have made all the adjustments for all the other edits, so we can't get there yet. But what it's saying is.
Yeah, I'm not, so, but once again, I'm.
Michael, those four items were at 2.92% of the tax rate by themselves.
Oh, yeah, no, okay.
So the other part of the conversation, Michael, which I was trying to mention is if any ARCA funds were to be used for those positions, it could decrease the amount in this current budget. It would just have to be something that councils are aware of and future councils are aware of in order to have those be fully funded in the budget in the future.
And the only comment I'd like to make about that is I understand the concept. Budgeted, that, that just budgeting, we're going to have to have the budget finalized by the end of January at the latest. If, if the intent is to budget for these positions utilizing some, anticipating that we do some amount of ARCA funds to help support them, that's going to be a pretty arbitrary decision at this point in time. We don't have a basis for identified projects or whatever, so, so if you want to budget them, understand the, I'll say the risks, I don't say that to be the problem, but understand the risks associated with it. Want to say, okay, we'll budget these four positions and assume 25% can be funded by ARCA or have the, or our, just try to justify that, so on. Just if you, if that's what you want to do, as long as you are doing that consciously and you understand that there's, only time will tell whether we achieve that 25% substance from ARCA or not.
I just wanted another clarification that it's not adding another 2% on top of this, 4%. Those four positions are in that budget of 4.26.
Yeah, it's 2.9%, 2.9, of the 4.2% projected increase that you see there, 2.92% of what is associated with these positions. So the difference, well, 1.32% is allocated to other expense increases.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Just one other question. So really the IT administrator, is that even up for discussion at this point given that the council has already committed surplus funding to the, to that staff position? Nobody's got, or, or advertised yet, right?
No, Rick and I had to talk about it, moving ahead, but I'd like to say that's a commitment because I feel the council, I feel, I mean, the council voted to use some of the subsidy funds to try to get that position in-house now, like we needed it six months ago. And the, the implication is, is that we bring that, we don't want to make somebody in to say, first of all, I'm sorry, we want somebody to, to the laundry. So the explicitly, more explicitly, I'd like to say, because the prior council awareness and ownership of the crew, that position is, will be.
And, and I'll be consistent with that surplus conversation and not supporting that position, not because I don't recognize the IT needs, but I am really concerned that this is going to be a new cost center and that the alternative information technology services isn't really thoroughly investigated in terms of, could we have a part-time and we have a contract? If we have a full-time person, are we still going to need a lot of contracted services? I just, I'm just worried that that 66 is going to become a much bigger number moving forward.
So a couple of comments on this before, we'll see if we're ready for vote. Rick did do an analysis of all the IT needs. I think there's more than enough work, but he could find for that position to do, for a position, the amount for it. I would say that, that if that's the wage and benefits, it's probably low, it probably is. But the other note I just wanted to note here is if it was those numbers, if we use all those position numbers, we're looking to do something like what was stated earlier of first year, it's 75% funded to ARCA, second year, 50%, third year, 25%. And then in that fourth year, there is no funding for those positions at ARCA. It's 444,000, 450,000, so just all 450,000. So out of a $2.5 million amount that we have from ARCA, you've only allocated 70,000 to date. So if you're looking at it overall, that would be, call it the half billion out of the 2.5, if that's something council wants to address when we start hearing about ARCA and the last comment on that is if we did that, that would be $74,000 out of that total number, which is 296,000, would be from the general fund budget for this month of year. 74 or 75 would be 25% of the overall cost of those. There's no total on the bottom there, but the total would be 296,000.
So that's a, it's like 75,000.
It was by 222,000, 225,000.
Assuming that those positions are going to be 75,000, it's an assumption the council will make, but.
It helps to hear it without your mess.
Sorry. I think that's a very risky assumption. If you said we could subsidize those positions, maybe, you know, made an arbitrary decision, we could subsidize those at 75,000. That I would feel terribly uncomfortable with. What you say, we're going to subsidize 270,000 out of 200,000. Yeah, 75%, I think that's a huge risk assumption.
So I asked the question earlier if they were ARCA elements, the answer was that we think that, no, we can do that 100% and it shouldn't be against. But I mean, that was the.
Along that line, I appreciate Carol's comment about if we use ARCA money, it's going to come home to roost at some point. We have this, I'll call it precious jewel of ARCA money that could be used for a variety of things, most of which I have no idea what they are. I understand some people do and that they know it well. I'm reluctant at this point to make a decision about ARCA money before we have had the conversation about ARCA money on the 14th. And I would like to keep this motion clean of ARCA money right now.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm trying to understand the motion, the purpose of the assessment. We're questioning, you know, as I look at this budget, if you ask me to sum it up in one sentence, it would be unsustainable. In 2021, fiscal year that just ended, your wages and salaries went up by 2.98% year-on-year. Jump ahead to the 22 budget, where we are today, your salaries and wages went up by 6.33%. Jump forward to the 23 budget, which is what you're discussing now, and the increase is 9.42% year-on-year. If I look at your 21 actual and your 23 budget you're discussing now, salaries, wages and benefits have gone up by a million dollars in two years for this budget. So I'm, I'm listening to the motion, I understand the intent behind it, but I don't understand, you know, I don't understand why the council isn't looking at the outgoers, isn't looking at the ARCA funds, isn't looking at some of the possibilities, because as I hear the motion, you know, it's set in stone, these four positions. I'm not, obviously, I'm way on the outside looking in. I don't deal with the city on a day-to-day basis, but I don't see the necessity of the motion. When the manager, you don't need to have a budget set till the end of January. So I think the prudent thing to do would be to run some, you know, these are, this is it for the budget. I mean, it's set in stone. If you vote this motion, it seems to me the more prudent thing to do would be to have your finance director simply run some scenarios. What are our wages look like in the outgoers? Can we in fact use ARCA funds, you know, to lessen the impact on the tax rate? Because once you vote this, you know, it's about your stuff. So if a week from now you get some information that you didn't have today and it's not good information, now you're having to cut other, other areas of fight. And you haven't even gotten around to discussing the street sidewalk equipment fund, which as it stands in this budget is locally inadequate. You know, you, you, you're thinking about a 3% increase when I start to think whether municipalities are even going to get a bite at that apple next summer with Vermont having, Vermont having $2.2 billion in transportation funds, which is wonderful, you know, for the interstate highway system, but I don't see how that translates to cost when you're going to, when we live in Vermont, we pay three months a year. So, you know, respectfully, I just, I, I appreciate the motion, but I just think it's a little premature, given that you've got eight weeks to finalize this budget. And so, and I see you sort of tying yourselves in for something that you might regret. Yeah, I, I don't see this as, the motion is related to the ties to the positions. So if we wanted to come back at a future budget meeting and there's a future vote that says we're not going to include all of the positions, that's something that we could all make up at that time. I think the intent is, that's what Counselor Shumbl wants to see, though, is in the budget we'd have those four positions.
That was my only intent. My intent was not that it be cast in stone. I, I'm just doing it as a means and I don't know if this is the way one does this. I'm doing it as a means of saying this is what I consider a priority before we even start the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, I think with the intent it would frame it because if we're looking at no more, or, yeah, no more than 4% as a target and the four positions are 2.92%, then you're basically framing, now we're talking about that 1% left for our conversation today at least. We could then have future conversations on it, but that's going to be, you're not for those positions, which could then drive down that overall rate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with this motion so long as we're not legally bound to incorporate all four of these positions 100% funded by the general fund.
To me, I see the motion as all, I see the motion as only, I'll say temporarily reading on a building block, so you go on and evaluate the rest of the budget. And if you get to a point where you say, okay, we just can't do that, I. I'll say temporarily, reading a building block, so you go on and evaluate the rest of the budget. And if you get to a point where you say, okay, we just can't do that, I my standpoint is, I mean, you can't say, well, we need to change that position that way.
But I do, I do agree with what Tom brought up, locking ourselves in to two-point-nine-two percent, one-hundred percent funded, but I think like
Yeah, and I apologize, Mayor. We used to just go around the table, I'm just an old guy. We just go around the table and say, okay, does everybody wants to run this scenario? Everybody would sort of nod, and that's what you do.
Yeah, I mean, the one difference here is with our plans, you know, if we're going to be discussing those, we haven't had a plan on how we're going to address those yet. So in order to finalize that, Steve's bringing that in on December fourteenth. So I think that's where, right now, we're trying to build that framework and see if.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, on that, I just want to hand shake quick patients. It's not the Steve who's going to come on the fourteenth to lay out a plan in front of you that says, here are all the things that you're going to spend money on. What I want to do is to, it's been a while since we, since I made a presentation on ARPA. I think we need to, I need to, on, I need to request the council, yeah, program, I think, make some global decisions on allocations. And then, and then make some decisions about the process of what you're going to entertain their requests. I've already got a half a dozen requests, folks haven't seen them all. And there, there are potentially more out there. And the other part of that discussion is, you want to solicit more requests, or you want to use those for city funds. So I, I will come to you with a, a very preliminary list of potential expenditures, only one, maybe two, of which you both have decided upon, but it's to let you know what's at least out there right now.
Yeah, I will look towards Carol and ask her regarding Robert's rules. If we vote on this, does that bind us without a reconsideration and how the rules work on that?
Well, it's, it's my understanding you'd have to do a reconsideration if you vote on this.
What if you did, what if you didn't do a formal vote, but just, just recent informal consensus, okay? We'd like to, we'd like to continue the budget deliberations based on the informal assumption, we're going to add whatever those four positions are. Rather than getting locked into, I might lose questions. Spare. Just, what you're, what you're trying to do here is, is worth to build some consensus on what elements of the budget you think need to be in, which there may be a latitude to take that out, so I don't, I don't know.
So in that case, like I said, my only goal is that this is a starting point for the conversation. I'm happy to withdraw the motion, if it looks like the motion is going to be binding, and if we can have consensus, I'm good with that.
Yeah, so I, even though I don't think it's binding, just to make sure that we are all in agreement, I'll just do a hand count. And so all of those who would like to see those four positions added in, just raise your hand. So we got one, two, three, four. And so we do have a majority of people that would like to see all four of the positions. So that side, that's a starting point. Council, hammer if your hand is up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's not the, I don't, I don't see the need for these, for these investments, and I think they are investments in growing the groundless, which is the main factor of the city's financial sustainability. And I'm, I'm really concerned about the city's financial sustainability when we look at the personnel cost increases. We're already like, we're already building in a debt service into this budget, it's going to go about a hundred, thirty thousand, or maybe a little bit higher. The retired debt services being absorbed by the operational costs of this budget. And you think about just the backlog of maintenance, you know, I, I, I do think we need to be really, really cautious. And then I look at some of the base salaries here for these positions. And what I'm seeing in the public administration marketplace right now, I also worry that these are going to be competitive salaries, that they have successful surgeons. So for those reasons, that's why, that's about blocking these.
So with those noted, since there is a majority that did like to see those in there, do we want to get back to the scenario one, expense reductions, to see if there's other places to make revision? We talked about the position, but there's other spots on here. The website upgrade, I'm really not sure. The way that, I, I think there's more of a training issue that has to do with our website rather than upgrade this needed. So I'm not sure if that's needed in there. I'm not sure for anybody else. Oh, and I'm sorry. Is there any question on that?
I just like more information. So you think it's not needed?
Personally, I, I operated on the moded system, which is our current vendor. I used it when I was working in a fair partnership, they use the same system. I think that you should be able to, with the right training, get the information on the website that we need there.
Okay.
Yeah, I also think there, there's, with the website, is some people find it hard to navigate, and I also think it's not aligned with accessibility standards. So I think that's the other issue. But if it's not in the budget, it's not the budget. So, you know, it's one less difficulty.
So I just wanted to mention, to mind what Erica was saying. The, we have reached out, our current vendor can make our website EBA accessible, very little work. There's also an app that can be put on the website that makes it accessible for a couple hundred dollars. So we do have the ability to do that, as well as one of the goals of if the IT person stays, they're going to be doing a lot more oversight on the website than I currently have time to do with, with staffing. So I'm not sure that that can go away.
So.
He agrees.
Yes.
So, so basically, it can be, it can be done another way.
So the next one, I'm going off your list on, on. So the summer bike patrol, I think we all like the bees, but I see this as, I know that we probably just can't afford right now. Okay, everyone consensus. Moving on to the city committee allowance, this had come up because there were committees that were asking for different things. It could be from training, it could be for consultants to come in. And of course, the amount would still have to be approved by council if it was something like a consultant, but there has been a request from different committees. So the intent was to have, even if it's a place owner, if we even drop that down to say a thousand dollars, it would give us an indication of what's coming in from committees that would be needed in the future.
Yeah, I was just going to ask on that, Steve, is that proposed eight thousand in response to, you know, I've heard from one, two, three chairs, I think it might cost around this, or was that just the number you ended up at?
Oh, I think it's a, it's a number that, we gravitated because, at the time, I think it's based on sixteen, it's five hundred dollars a piece, so very.
So I, I'd be comfortable with you saying that down to, let's say, twenty-five hundred or five thousand to keep the numbers.
I'm sorry. So you want to give me one number, though?
Let's go twenty-five hundred. It's the first year, we'll see how much it gets.
Counselor Boone, or then Counselor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm no surprise, I don't support this. I think we should not have it at all. I think that the recommendation to eliminate it would probably be best.
Counselor.
I'm just going to say five thousand, but twenty-five hundred is fine.
Counselor.
Yeah, I, you know, I just don't know what the committees want to spend it on, so.
So for example, the diversity and equity committee, if they wanted to have a specialist come in to speak about issues, they would have a need. And I think there's also community assessment that they have discussed doing, which would also have a cost. So those are things that would be, they can come to council and recommend. I just don't know what other line items they have to call it.
I think that, I think a lower amount makes sense, because I think if you look at it by committee, committee by committee, as a matter of fact, you know, as an example, the Board of Civil Authority, for the payment, or Board of Civil Authority has money in the election line item. The energy committee already has a line item. On there may be other committees that, that don't need it. So I think having a lower amount does make sense, I think. Allocating a, a specific amount per committee is, is probably higher than.
Counselor.
I'm sorry, I thought my mute was on.
Okay, so it sounds like a majority, though.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that, you know, if a committee wants to have especially that, we take money out of that for munchies or whatnot.
So it sounds like a, the majority of council, though, is fine with twenty-five hundred in that, as a line item. Counselor.
So, yeah, now I'll raise my hand again, sorry. And by the way, Carol, my, my, my inhale of air had nothing to do with what you were saying. So I, I look at the, the committee allowance, and I think of, you know, the other committees that we've had where they raised their own money to do their own things that they wanted to do. And I, I mean, I, we talked about, I, I swear, I just heard like assessments and also heard like not get-togethers, but there was a, something similar to that, and, and I just, it doesn't matter, city council as a whole supports it, so never mind. Just vote on it so that we can move forward.
The next item, BYCC stipend, just to note for this past year, this work was done down behind Rotary Park, near the river access down there. It takes you over to where the waterfall is. And that work, I believe it was a direct seventy-five hundred dollars bill total. And out of the new business that we had, River Access, was one of the three priorities that the community had. If the BYCC stipend was to be used for that purpose again, I think it is valuable. It's something that, that group would most likely come back, and we could have a more targeted area or approach based on what the community group comes back with. But again, that's my one opinion.
Are you saying that was used previously, that amount of money?
That was used this year. So if you take the trail right now of Rotary Park, and there's a little path that leads down to the river, something like that, there is work that was done to make it so that you could actually navigate without walking in puddles, muds, or rocks and slipping in order to get to the waterfall, which is, I don't know if you've ever been to the waterfall, but.
I know.
But now you can't. You should be able to today, if you wanted to take a, a quick walk down. And maybe that's something that is, after you take the walk, it might change your mind, if you think that there's something that you.
Take your yak tracks today, though. Um, I, you know, I, I like the BYCC, I like trails, but I would take this line out. I, I, and the reason I say that is because I'm thinking about committee allowances. There's a lot of, there are a lot of grants that with, with a match budget in the, that appears in the budget, or some matching allowance that appears in the budget. You can go to, go after recreational trail department grant, or conservation fund grant, or an art infrastructure grant. So the committees, I think if the committees have the ability to access matching funds to pursue particular grant applications, that, that's a good source for that. And maybe looking at the miscellaneous expenses or the, I think, sorry, grant, there's a grants match allowance off. Thinking about those across committees might be useful, and having the committees send what they're thinking about next year will help shape this budget useful.
Rick actually mentioned that perhaps they could be encouraged or placed by the council on the ballot for an individual lineup, an individual vote.
Yeah, one result is a second.
Exactly, but it doesn't show up on. Yes, I mean, I, I'd be fine with, I'd be fine with that suggestion, and I think sort of to Michael's earlier point about the committees and them being active and self-starting and stuff. I think the point of the civic committee allowance is to empower them to be able to do more of those projects. And when I hear the project that you just described, Mr. Mayor, I think, well, that's Patrick's trail, that's a great project for them. So I think that I'd also be comfortable with it. We're moving that line item, we're putting it on the.
And well, hearing that people like it out of our budget. So, well, I'm just going to make that comment. Hearing that, it sounds like take it out of the budget, possibly put it as a separate article. That's the way that I'm hearing it forward, and I'll just wait to hear from the council.
Yeah, so we're taking both of those items out?
Currently, we're just talking.
And putting them into a line item? Because I think I'm okay with that.
Right now, we're just talking about the BYCC statement.
Well, we were.
Yeah, we'd do it to both of them. We'd do it to both of them.
Well, it's a bit, my point would be reducing fifty-five hundred out of the city committee, plus the seven, seventy-five hundred from the full BYCC.
Yeah, we already took the action previously to say it's going to be twenty-five hundred only for the city committee allowance, and this would strike the amount for BYCC.
So recently, I went down there to the waterfall, and I will say that as a relatively overweight individual, that doesn't really move that much, it was very accessible, and accessible, sorry, for someone like me. I mean, but it's, it definitely has been a benefit if it's utilized. And, you know, I'm sure the river folks, the river, I shouldn't say river folks, the, the people that are discussing the river access would probably support something like this.
So with that, I'm still taking it as a whole out of the budget, we'll put it as a separate article. Okay.
Well, we put it as a separate article, but only, we have a policy of how outside the organization or fund it, follow that policy.
There, there is a policy, but then in addition to the policy, the council can place anything it wants on the ballot.
But, well, to push back, council adopts a policy, and and I think, you know, it sets guidelines for the city council as well.
I don't disagree. I just wanted to let you know that, that the option is, council, council is not, council has the authority to place anything it wants on the ballot.
So, so I'll just, I'll just take this one, because we're, we're not making significant progress here in terms of dealing with this budget. And if you, if you say we're taking out a budget, we're going to put it on the ballot, it's bait and switch. I mean, it still ends up contributing to the tax rate increase if you have it on the ballot. I'm a strong proponent of the BYCC that does some very good work up in the county vast, and over the last five years. I hate to see it go, but I think, I think the council is going to be stepping up here in terms of making some hard decisions. What is it that we got to take out that none of us want to take out?
Counselor.
We just reduce it to four thousand?
Four thousand, is that fine?
Was it the bill, there was a specific amount, though, like, like, that seventy-five hundred was based on?
That, that's probably one crew week. So we'll get.
They'll scope their work based on the amount that we have. So Counselor Boone, and then.
Let me, let me, let me, I'm sorry. So probably what I tried to, I picked the city committee allowance as our, the, the BYCC stipend. It's hard, because they didn't go directly to city operations, they didn't go directly to services that we were providing to. So that was a reason in my mind for putting some of these on the chopping block. Because to the extent that you don't eliminate complete line items, you're going to have to find some other line items that you. Because to the extent that you don't eliminate complete line items, you're gonna have to find some other line items that you're gonna make adjustments in. With the budget, in our plan, as we will improve that process, but on a line by line basis. I, to me, this was sort of a, a starting place and a low hanging fruit.
Yeah. Steve, with that point, I think we're, we're limiting it down. Well, once we have the evaluation of what all these payments make, then we'll know where we'll have to do additional. So hearing two different thoughts though. One is decreasing it down to four thousand and leaving it in because that way there we're not doing a bait and switch versus having it as a separate article.
In the spirit of, Tom mentioned earlier, we, we're not, we don't have to figure this all out today. So I, let's start by cutting it down to four thousand. And next week we'll cut it down again by another.
Okay, so.
I would just, just go cutting and not, not putting it on the ballot. I mean, we make these policies to guide council action. And when council doesn't follow its own policy, I think it loses credibility. And I think that's what happened with the marketing money that went on the ballot. They didn't get their petitions. Council put it on the ballot and, and there was a fifty thousand dollar allocation. And there's no measurable outcomes for that advertising money. I, I think it's been a waste of money. But approved by voters.
Yeah. Well, and I know they've actually spent all that money either. So we haven't seen the outcome because they haven't spent it. Part of that was because of COVID. I remember a conversation that we had was if there were banners on the side of tractor trailer trucks. And we said, well, everyone's at home, so no one's gonna be seeing a tractor trailer truck down the road. So that did not appear. So I do believe that they still have one there. So I do hear the one comment to say it eliminated it completely. I think I, I take your point, not having it as a separate item, following policy, just not doing it that way. But is there more of a consensus to keep an amount in the budget overall?
Now, you know, the more I think about it, which is, you know, we're sure just taking out.
Okay. Okay. So moving on to this next section, these are all reductions. And just to reiterate, these were amounts that were originally increased by a certain amount. And these are now being reduced by a certain amount from that line item. So I would take it as a bulk and say, do we reduce all of it? Oh, and I'm sorry. I, before moving on, Tom, you did have your hand up.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo what Steve was saying with regard to the Vermont Youth Conservation Board. You know, there are some programs that, that are more than just cleaning up a trail. It's about instilling a sense of community service, people, and especially younger people. It's about giving them a sense of purpose. We started, I just think it's an incredibly worthwhile program because not only does the city receive a direct benefit in the term, in terms of labor that will cost the city far more to provide, you know, under a union contract. Which, again, with some younger Vermonters, you're also instilling to them and encouraging a sense of service to others. I think for seventy-five hundred dollars, when you look at the impact this budget had, raise a separate one, about sixty grand, that's unperforming. I mean, this year you're going to get sixty grand. We budgeted it at fifty, then there's your seventy-five hundred.
But that's based on the decision that happened to be made from the VYCC separate law. If it's a council, if it's a council, you're still taking out the budget, but finding out alternative funding.
Exactly. That makes sense.
And, and just an additional note, the Vermont Recreational Trails Program allows applications up to fifty thousand dollars for trail projects with a twenty percent match. So, you know, with, with a grant application that's successfully funded, you can unlock, you know, quite a bit of money for a trail project much larger than seven thousand five hundred dollars and could, could, could be contrasted to Vermont Youth Conservation.
Yeah, it's either way. So if we don't have the money there to match it, I mean, that's the really, the prospectus is that a twenty percent match would be ten thousand dollars a budget if you don't have it. And I think to your point though, getting back to that grant match allowance or miscellaneous, those are also ten thousand worth to come from. So it could end up being, if this is eliminated, there's two other spots there that they're line items for, that you could look at if that's. But, so now getting back to that reduced category, these are all items that were increased, but it's looking to decrease them by a certain amount. And that's the recommendation by the manager. Is your, I would say do all, right? Just to take that suggestion and then let's nip around the edges of who wants to keep something else.
No, I, I, I agree with, I agree with the mayor that said, let's just, because the, the two that we identified already, again, people get more things up. The two we identified already as important to county constituents are the cemetery staffing and traffic signal maintenance. It doesn't, if you're just a member of the public looking at this now, that won't necessarily agree, but there are still increases, net increases in both of those categories. The increase is just not as great as originally proposed. So because of that, I'm comfortable taking that list later, whether it's eight or nine.
And I was wondering if there's a opportunity to trim down our advertising button. I think one thing that is kind of annoying me is when I see an ad taking over this paper or meeting that's been canceled when there's no, there's no legal requirement to do that. It just kind of feels like it's burning through someone. And when we have posted pre-locations, we have to put it on the website. It's part of the clerk's office. We put it on a front porch forum. I don't think we, you know, I, I feel like there may be lots of little opportunities like that in this budget to trim down and find the pockets of five thousand dollars.
So we can get there right after this section. So I'm gonna put that as a. Any other comments on this section of the.
Yeah, just want to come out. Just to please the production of the library stipend by eighteen hundred dollars.
I can't, I can't speak on behalf of the library board of trustees, but as a member of the board of trustees, I would be comfortable.
Janet?
I just wanted to remind the council, if they don't already see it, that grant match line literally sits in my budget. And it's fluctuated between ten and fifteen thousand dollars every year, depending on how busy or not busy we are with grants. So every other department gets to dip into that grant match line. So when you talk about reductions, think about that my one budget line helps assist everybody else in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Yeah. The only comment I want to make to that is we, if we have vacancy savings and it is understood that that vacancy savings could translate into a five thousand or a ten thousand dollar grant, we could also overspend that line in the future because what we're doing is approving an overall budget. I wouldn't want to approach it that way, but knowing that we still have the ability, if there were additional funds that we could. Any other comments on those?
Well, you know, I would reduce the PABC stipend.
For, for consideration, if we're doing to one, that question would be should we just all three? We usually give a inflationary.
Well, go to, go to the line. The library increase was, they were similar to the senators, but the, the numbers that resulted from those are. Library. Thousand dollars. It's a little bit over six thousand dollars for the increase would be the city and the partnership where I think that's two thousand dollars.
So your original increase was based on a percentage across the board?
I think it was two and a half or something. Although that's the difference.
Okay. Well, could we do a blanket two percent then? A two percent for each organization, two one five.
You said the fourth, I don't think we did.
That's something I'd like to, because I, I do the, like, because we do treat those three organizations relative to.
No, I mean, the reason why they come in on a quarterly basis and report to us is because they are the three organizations. So with that suggestion of reducing not the library without it now, but decreasing the three organizations, which is the very partnership, barrier development and the library. Instead of a two point five percent increase, it would be a two percent increase.
Yeah, so there is still two, still two percent.
Counselor Booth? Yeah, you're telling me, counsel.
So their suggestion is, your suggestion is to reduce the, the increase for the partnership and the barrier development?
And the library.
And the library.
All three, instead of going up by a two point, point five percent increase, they'll go up by a two percent increase. Yeah, I, I think we're, it looks like a consensus otherwise. Okay. Okay. So we're through those sections. So council members brought up advertising. So I just wanted to touch there on one of the new items. I gotta say, I actually got a request that we also put advertising in the world in addition to the time targets because not everyone reads the times. We do have what is our paper of record. So the time targets is our paper of record in order to warn public meetings. So that, that's in the.
We don't have to warn cancellations.
I guess.
Well, I can sort of hold that, but I guess I don't have the confidence. Well, when the meeting is canceled.
I'm wondering, but.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't see that, there's no meeting.
Well, the other thing is that most. Most of the time, the, the meetings that are canceled are on a schedule and perhaps it could just be added at the bottom of the morning from a week before. It says next week's meeting is canceled or there will be a meeting that we herself did that.
Right. But there wouldn't have to be a separate ad. So with that, do you have a dollar amount you're thinking about?
So let's say we've had on average about one or one meeting canceled more and those ads cost how much?
Yeah. I, I will say that a lot of the, a lot of the TA ads are driven by council action. If council is doing ordinance changes, there are certain numbers of warnings and notices that have to be published if we're doing charter changes, if we're doing very, you know, public meetings, if there, I mean, there are a number of reasons why there are publications that are required. With the exception of the, the canceled meetings, and we have one per, typically we have that one per month. I can't think of anything else that is being done that isn't statutorily required.
So this looking historically does show the unaudited was seventeen sixty-fourty. So if we went from eighteen seventeen, now there's some, some changes. Seventeen should be a pretty accurate question.
Well, the audit is also.
Yeah, seventeen sixty-fourty. And I mean, we could not get what they spend it today, but honestly, we haven't done a number of charter, well, county charters.
We'll get to it.
We haven't done as many ordinances as done in the past.
And we've got some of those coming up.
But I think would council be comfortable with a thousand dollars off net with that conversation?
Sure. One other question. So is the city legally obligated to publish the full agenda versus just a smaller box with a link?
So I know we're at the point now for other items and I know some counselors wanted this. Counselor Stoppa?
Move the school resource officer to point, point five, rather than sixty-nine percent.
Yeah, it's not funded that way, actually.
That's. Larry's on board, but always was, but that's not, that's not a function of just adjusting your budget estimate. The staffing and the police department is based on having that position fully funded. If you wheel it down, you end up with wind up with either having to eliminate that position, try to choose the right time. Or just, that's not something we can practice before.
Well, I'll give a little more detail. So the sixty-nine percent and twenty-one or thirty-one percent, that's based on the amount that we as the city pay versus the amount that the school pays. So if it was to be not a full-time position, but a halftime position, then that same amount would change at the school level. And we'd want to have a conversation with them on the ability to use that position. And if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think the conversation is more significant that it takes a, a full-time P E position, of which you know, the chief has said we're on the both side. I think if you make a reduction to it, and he makes it that, that him you can converse it to something less than a full-time position, then you're not going to have any officers stay here for less than a full-time.
One other thing too is that some people don't understand is when the school is closed, the school officer is not off. They actually convert over and go on patrol. So then there, it's another cruiser on the street when school is not in session. So it's not, they don't follow the school schedule and they're off all summer. They're actually continuing to work, working for control. So.
If we're going to, if we're moving on to, and I think this is where Sam or Mel wanted to get to, was looking at the July. Want to go right back to the top of the budget and work through department by department? See what jumps out that, and you can visualize.
I was wondering if we could look at the buildings that we have, the B O R. And I asked, I know I asked you about this in a cast. Put the B O R and the auditorium and cost and revenue over time so we could see a trend. You know, really expensive revenue.
We have that data. We don't have it currently, but we could pull that together and give us a couple of weeks. Show you what it is.
So can I get a commitment from you on the. Oh, just because it is budget related.
Well, well, I understand. So I'll look at this, this, a couple of weeks.
So if you said by the twelve twenty-one council meeting. The B O R, the October pool. Are you looking for all of those?
No, I think just the B O R and October.
The, or the civic center? Yeah. Cause that also includes the alumni hall. And that would be, I think, easier because I think we already have that as a template. Other items from council?
What are, if any, are there any overlaps between, or not only? Are there any reductions, I guess this is for Steve or Don, any reductions or eliminations in the second scenario that weren't addressed in the first scenario?
No, I think they were, they were using the first scenario.
Yeah.
Cutting in a hundred thousand dollars and that, so that would.
And I think it would be plugged back in because of the.
Right, yeah, yes, it was using something. It just.
Possible to get an updated number from Don?
So while Don is working on that, I just want to make sure, are there any other items that we haven't here addressed for reduction for additions?
Not at this time, but.
And you already took care of one that I was gonna bring up and it was because the comment about reducing advertising. Because we had requests that we. Because we had requests that we use other papers as well, and I think at some point, we have to get to acknowledge that we can't, we would be telling everybody's individual way that they receive information, and it's just, you know, get out of it, get responsive. So we already put advertising on the city website, the front porch forum on Facebook.
This is an item of insignificance, but $250 for the front porch forum support.
There wasn't the addition of 250 for front porch forum support. In the past, we had a motion that we give a one-time donation. We do use that tool quite often, and they do ask for support. It is an item that was added this year, and, right, since it's a new item?
I, I say later, near to Tom's earlier point about sustainability, the $250 for front porch forum is not hurting the sustainability.
And we use it.
Forever, yeah.
At least three, four times a week.
Yeah, yeah. And if it ever got declared illegal by statutory purposes for public notifications, then we could really cut our advertising budget.
Then you'd save 1700.
Also worth noting, since we got the recommendation after this is what's published to you guys, for the, like, the veterans. We got the 2005 59. Ask for veterans' life.
What's the number in there?
I changed it already. It was like, whatever, number you guys have on the budget.
What it was.
Line 752.
Didn't Ed say that they covered all the costs of those?
It went, so we have FY '21 approved to 2000, FY '21 unaudited at 1750, and then FY '22 approved to 2100, FY '23. Plus 21, okay, so that went to 2560.
Yeah, during the, we were talking about flags at the Veterans Council to take, to take control of the flags.
They do go on Main Street, and these would be flags at Hope Cemetery.
Yeah, the cemetery church, yeah, I got it. It's not the Main Street flag.
And I guess, just so everyone is aware, the flag on the flag pole at Purdy Park, that was one that was actually donated by the Lions.
Yeah.
And that flag pole has been maintained by the Lions. That wasn't something that's maintained by the city. We probably want to follow up on that, because the city did not have the keys to lower and raise the flag what they're supposed to. So just as a side note, if you're talking.
Well, the suggestions that made by individuals complained the flag has to be more, and it raised back. We're recently authorized that City Park, City should take responsibility for it. Jim, I don't think it's a big deal, I guess, I would say, listen, houses play.
Well, I, I mean, it's our property, I think we should have.
That's, that's what I'm saying, okay.
I'm just bringing up that, that, that additional flag that we're maintaining, but, I mean, it's got to be very, very. Other items? Yeah, I mean, I've come in, I've missed the time to think myself, but I've worked with the manager here on this in the past. So, you know, most of my comments are great.
Oh, one thing we should bring up, Larry recently brought this up, detail, but I didn't say this Thursday, Friday. And Larry, I'm going to let you speak to this, but because of a loss in grant funding for one of our domestic violence detectives, for us to maintain that position, then Larry advocates strongly for it, it would be another $12,000, I'm sorry. Expense increase.
Sorry, can you explain that one more time, Steve?
Uh, I'll, Larry will do a better job. Larry advised me Thursday, Friday, that one of the grants funding of a domestic violence detective that I believe is assigned to the state's attorney's office, funded to be granted through the city, be something to this point. One of those grants will stop, which means if we're going to continue that position, absent they provide some other grant funding, from what Larry's optimistic, that, that results in $12,000 increase. Larry, you want?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
I'll turn my video on, even though my network's poor, so who knows whether or not it'll mess anything up. But, yeah, Steve's right, there's two positions that are at the state's attorney's office currently under grants. We have the stop grant, and we have the part, the other portion of the domestic violence grant that we've had for many years. Unfortunately, we're losing that domestic violence grant, which funds a part-time position at the state's attorney's office for doing domestic violence interviews. These interviews are very important type of interviews, because they get into conversations with the victims to determine whether or not there's past history of abuse, stuff that is very relevant to the cases, and it's very, there's very relevant follow-up that happens. Back and interview victims to do follow-up questions, follow, follow-up photos, all those types of things. So it's a really valuable position, and with losing one of those positions, we've dropped from 40 hours a week at the state's attorney's office to 20 hours. But then on top of that, what Steve's talking about that I noticed is our grant for the stop grant that funds a 20-hour position at the state's attorney's office for these investigations. We, we're just a little bit short on grant funding to be able to fund that position for 20 hours. And I'm, I'm just, because, because I'm very passionate about domestic violence investigation and the, the services we put forward for domestic violence investigations. Hate the idea of taking tremendous amount of steps backwards. We're, we're taking a little bit of a step backwards when we lose that, the funding for that one position. But if we could at least get that little extra to maintain the 20 hours for the stop grant position, as, as Steve and I have pointed, pointed out, I'm pretty passionate about the fact that we, we need, can't take steps backwards in this. And I would definitely request that we would add, I figured around 12,000 would cover the difference. I also, on that same note, have asked the grant manager that covers the stop grant, if we can relocate funds. She was optimistic of that, so there's a good chance that we would get the full funding anyways. But I haven't been able to hear back from her. I know folks from Circle are also reaching out to her to have conversation about it. Some of these stop grant positions, they haven't, they haven't been able to fill all the positions throughout the state. So some, there, there may be some excess funding that could be transferred over to us. She sounded very optimistic of it. So the hope is that we would be able to get that fundage up to those 20 hours. But I asked Steve just in case, because I really didn't want to see the loss of one whole position and then drop the hours back on the other position, but I appreciate the consideration.
Clarifying, question for this, so domestic violence detective, does this position oversee sexual assaults?
It, it does, it does have a piece with sexual assaults as well. I would tell you that domestic violence and sexual assault, sexual violence go hand in hand. Yeah, as, as everybody that has experience and knowledge with domestic violence investigations, sexual abuse is a very large component to domestic violence. Domestic violence covers many different, many, it, it really goes into many different crimes that we investigate, and so it definitely does cover a piece of the domestic, the sexual assault.
So the reason why I bring up that question is, we get our statistics for the city, we also see what the FBI data is, which isn't always a number one. But the number one concern that I have and have seen in our statistics is with sexual assaults. That's the one item that has remained by the city property count is way down, but these are more important. I think, having a position like this that can continue to work on, not just these cases, but also working with Mosaic and other organizations within the city. So just to follow up, Larry, so with this position, this person would also be able to work with our partners, so Mosaic would be, I'm going to lose the names off the top of my head, but do you different organizations within the city?
Yes, this position definitely works very closely with Circle and certainly the other advocacy groups such as Mosaic. You know, the, this investigator is, goes hand in hand with our other investigator at the PD. Again, we're losing funding for those positions, but that's a partial funding that is given to us to go to pay for one of our detectives, our portion of one of our detectives that does all these investigations as well. I'm a strong advocate to maintain that detective to continue those investigations as well, because they're very important investigations, and our, building our relationships and maintaining our relationships with these advocacy groups are extremely important, because, you know, I don't need, even, even need to preach to everybody about the fact that these crimes aren't crimes that we're ever going to be able to arrest our way out of. We need to give services to the victims, and we need to give services to, to the whole, whole process. We, we definitely need to reach out to these advocacy groups, and we need to be able to maintain these funded positions or these grant positions. I, I'm dedicated to making sure that we continue to try to get, get these grant funding, the grant funding in, and keep some of them funded as long as we can. I know Circle is looking at working with us on applying for other grant funding to, to maintain these positions. But yeah, I'm, I'm definitely, it's definitely, that position goes hand in hand with building relationships with the, with these other agencies, along with the state's attorney's office itself. It gives us that, that link with the state's attorney's office. They know that they can reach out to our investigator at the office to go hand in hand with that investigator at the state's attorney's office to do those follow-up investigations, and to reach out to those advocacy groups to, to get them involved as well. They definitely do work with them.
Council, are you fine with having it?
Well, to distill that down, what's the dollar amount? And when, when, could we know when this grant could be potentially reinstated?
So the, the grant itself, for the stop grant, is, is, we still have that grant. The other grant for the domestic violence, we did hear back that we couldn't get funding for that grant. So the grant, the stop grant position is there, it's just the amount that we have for the grant funding isn't adequate enough to pay an investigator for 20 hours a week. My math was that we were just short of 15 hours a week if we had, if we maintained that position. We'd have to drop the hours of that worker, that investigator, to under 15 hours in order to be able to not go over the amount of funding we have in that grant. I think the grant funds just over 20, $20,000, we would be, we're, we're close to about $30,000 that we need overall. I think my math was around 12, just under $12,000. Again, I am, I'm trying to find out as soon as I can from the grant manager, she was going to get back to me in reference to whether or not we could relocate some of that money. Those other positions, those, there's other agencies that have grants in the state of Vermont under that stop grant, but some of them haven't filled the position with investigators, because we all know that there's an issue with filling positions these days. And sure, her thought was that she might be able to relocate some funds for me, some funds that aren't being used by other agencies, and I, I can't give you any answer when I can hear back from her. I reached out to her a while ago, she was supposed to reach back out to me, but I haven't heard back. I was going to reach out to her, but Circle volunteered to reach out and see if they could find some more information out from her. But I'm hoping within the next few weeks that I would be able to find out whether or not we could get some funds relocated to us.
So say we put it in for now, so we get a, an estimate, because I think Don's pretty much there. But if, on that same date for 1221, where we're finding out more about the civic center calculations, do you have information back for us about this, and if we would possibly be able to reduce by that 12,000 because of the grant?
I got a little bit of an echo, Mayor, so what was the date that you were hoping to hear back from?
Our council meeting on December 21st, if that's possible.
I, by all means, I will try my hardest to reach out to that individual and see if I can get an answer by then. I can't guarantee any answer, because she may not have the answer for me yet either. But I will certainly reach out myself and find out whether or not Circle has reached out to her. But I would hope you feel to have an answer. She was supposed to have an answer to me a few weeks ago, but I haven't heard back from her. So I'm assuming she must have looked into it by now, and hopefully, hopefully I'll be able to reach her by then.
Thank you. So with that, council, we'll put it in for now, and then we can run the numbers and see where we're at. From raw?
On other items, I was just wondering, one of the biggest changes in my workplace this year has not been travel. And I know we have a lot of, every department has a travel line here. And so I'm curious if the professional development travel costs are expected to be. I, I mean, even now, even though we could travel, most people are just sitting on a link to a meeting. It seems like everybody's doing that more and more, so aren't there opportunities to trim those travel lines?
I have 100 bucks in my book.
I don't think they're significant.
There's 100 bucks in.
Yeah, it's interesting you make that point, because a lot of meetings, even when I am at work now, everyone is still on the team. They're just sitting at their desk like they're sitting at home. So the question really is, does that person really need to go into the office? It's, it's really interesting, because the state of Vermont is addressing it as a quarter-by-quarter basis right now to see how those changes are, are really what it is.
If people go to a regional conference, do they, is that built into the professional development one or the travel?
That's what you're impressed with.
I never put it before, silly me.
That's why we give you eight races bigger than one.
Back and forth, two days to play for.
So, so we're coming up on four o'clock, I'm not sure how long council wants to stay at this. I'd like to make a suggestion. If councillors need a paper, what I'm suggesting is that maybe we're at a point where councillors take a look at all, just go through the budget and identify individual line items to think. Reconsideration or whatever, because what I'd like to do, and I feel just that, Bill, I told you earlier, Bill published the capital plans for Sweetwater and Shore, I, I didn't want him to get into a presentation of those, but I want to bring those up on the screen and let Bill just get hold of you, so you're aware of what's out here.
Yeah, so we're approaching four o'clock, as Steve said, I think within the next 15 minutes, what we'll be able to see is where we're at.
Oh, yes.
We, first motion was less than 4%, which I think where we're going to end up is letting it bounce in any way.
That's all right, that's 12, it is.
So noting what the manager is stating is, this new sheet can be provided back up to council. It has all the new figures in it, so that he can review it and see if there's anything else that pops up. And the reason why I kept bringing up the meeting on December 21st is, if there isn't much else for consideration, we should have had at least one conversation on our 14th, we can see if there's some funds that may. We can see if there's some funds that may manage what we have for the conversation over the paper, if any of those funds are being used. Or is it? Or addressing any other changes that council feels.
I think Steve was starting about if anybody wants a paper version of the next one, I would like a paper version. The one that has print that I can read because I had gotten signed that was so small it was.
Well, what will happen is there's calculations on the right hand side, like by police dispatch. Or to get it to a good readable size, those, so we find that. Then I can print you a readable copy.
Okay, well, is what Sam has there, is that readable for you?
That looks readable, but I have this snow bear near like.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's okay size.
That's okay size and, and she has way more than I was ever given. So, yeah, it would be good to see them. And I travel.
Well, a lot. But for the budget that she has in there, everything else in that packet has been developed since you've been requested.
Okay, and, and I'm happy to come down and fix stuff up, so let me know how over a day.
Is that, does that work for everybody? Anybody who wants a paper copy? Let me ask you this, who wants a paper copy? Can you come down to pick it up? Well, we can put it in the mail, it's just gonna take that.
I can come together, that's, it's an easy job.
Sam, you have yours, no one would like one arrogant?
Well, yes, so Steve, these are going to be adjusted remember, so this would be a new sheet, right?
A new sheet. I do have this with the network, I can print it now. So tell me how many people want.
The one, two, three?
Well, everyone else, yeah.
Said he doesn't want to feel left out.
I had teed you up to just give a hundred thousand foot over here with the capital plans that you just put together. Not to get into the grant number, but I wanted to orient the council to that so they. They're on the. If I had yours, I'm gonna scroll just to get them up and we'll have a better resting place for them.
I, I did actually send them out to meet you earlier today.
Oh, okay.
Basically, I sent four documents. One of those documents, just to give you some perspective, and it was called capital improvement plan dash DWD. Get list everything that we could think of if you looked at 20 year timeframes. Your against the light improvement at the present or your against the notable good for water treatment plan. And, and that's the $45 million, but it doesn't have a price attached to it. The idea is here, that range. The ones that are, that are important and have year term. Effect, one is the streets division of capital planning list. And, and so each year there's an annual. Amount approved by voters for the streets and capital fund. Don had gone through and provided test year by year through. This 25 of what would be available for the streets and sidewalks and plumbing and that. So what we have is a list year by year. That shows the list projects and the type of the project. So one of the things that we're going to be, we will be. In order to, to get more streets into a condition where we don't have complaints or damaged cars or students and overlays. So there, there's thinner project, we know we're going to break up in five to eight years. But it gives us five to eight years, nine to three years, less than half the price of. So we're funding that in. This was designed in the same way we have some projects pushing, just proving yourself more. We will move to save it, we're going to. And that will slow down the, the delivery of the projects because the contract will probably be possible. So the streets division is, is the one that is most important for us to look at. Year term and includes all the streets and sidewalks. The two others that were supplied relate to the streets plan because when we go into a street, if we're going to do a reification. We're going to go and dig in the streets and replace water lines, sewer lines if needed. We right now aren't doing a valve repair program, you'll see that comes up about four years out. Some cities do something called the valve turn program where they go out and actually make sure that every valve system works. So that if you have a break, go and find out you can't start it off, have someplace else. A place to start it off. We haven't done that. And we're moving in that direction, we will get in that direction and we'll have a valve program later in time. The sewer program, it isn't that we don't have needs. It's just that we don't have a lot of resources right now. We're adjusting rates, we are coming, still won't be told, our revenues won't match our expenses. Think until FY 24 or 25. And so sewer is 50,000 a year, water is 750,000 a year. And streets is around 400,000. Streets is the one we get the most cry for. Water is probably the one we have to raise speed for. But sewers and park maintenance. So streets is the first thing we get to take a look at. This is also been distributed to the. The transportation advisory committee and the ADA committee. They, they all have an interest in mobility and accessibility. And so this, this plan is going to be managed. And I actually like, like truly just wrapped on things, when I stepped further, I said, this is an initial draft. Because truly I expect it to change. Like say here in. Council real also, it's on the ADA, it's an area that is, is hard for. A person who doesn't have different abilities to actually have the insights necessarily to do well skilled projects for that. And so getting that to be in is important. I can't tell you where the sidewalks are bad enough to be a problem. Because if I walk down, I don't have the different abilities that allow me to experience them. So if there's a small hole in sidewalk, I don't recognize it. And that's the kind of thing that the community helps with, and so I expect it to change. And once, once I get through, we'll make a chance to look at it, we'll make revision and. Back to you. Will be similar.
So I do have the four parts and I can talk to anyone who has any questions. I did preview these quickly and one question I had, I'm just going to pull back if it's the word. Because FY 24, is that when we have the 40 street project? Yes, so if we were to have a local match, which is really the sewer side. Is that something that comes from this or is that going to be out of a goal?
So, so the, that will actually phase that project. And so it's shown in the streets division. That's the first listing in FY 24 and FY 25. And so it matches the current construction period. We actually may not infer that until after the project. But I put it in those years so we would have the money set aside by the technical completion. There is an additional bit of work, there's a new water line for one of the homes on. Hard speed and sewer. And we are, we're from one of those, out of those enterprise activities.
But I just wanted to make sure that was addressed because that is not a list coming up. I think the other Btrans project is a hundred percent big for by Btrans, which is where the street onto. That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, there's a question about the, the core street and bonding. And I, I know, I know maybe not everybody's gotten the bond worksheets or Steve said the other day. Just to get an update on where we are with the 1.7, 2.5. There's six bonds here, it looks like in.
Hold on one second, so for this, this is one item and the bond is another item on the internet?
If we got, yeah, but I'm asking about it as it relates to 40 street.
Okay.
Because it sounds like, I think in FY 18 was there. Eighty, eighty thousand that we've already spent on that project and I was curious, what, what money has been spent allocated out of the bonds? In support of the project?
I'll refer to Don, but my guess is it's. So if there were any expenses that made in contract one.
Yeah, it says 37,000 today, it's on 1.1.
That was before I applied, so that was pre 2019.
So if anything, in that area, there is the widening of the corner if you're coming from. That turns onto 40 del.
That's where the, the homes were destroyed, grandest value destroyed.
But that was phase one of the project, they actually did take back a few homes and. We have, they moved the slope back to widen and widen and they also made it so the tractor trailers could actually make that rain in turn supplements.
But that's what 37,000 dollars is.
Well, the local share portion pays for that. At least another 80% of that would be the 20%.
I don't, I think all of those.
I'd like to go back and look because I honestly don't know. Exactly what it's paid for, but we can go back and look and report back down.
But I think everybody knows how it feels, but you know, the best thing to destroy your grandest value. It is not a good investment, that's not where I would expect that more, so I would have voted no on that.
No, understood, but even with the transportation advisory committee, the ground rules that you've set up, the first item is safety over cost. And that is what this is for, to save you from this intersection.
Yeah, yeah, well.
So on this list, the only other question I had, because River Street, I think you've talked about that. Here we show an overlay and I think it's listed somewhere else too because of a retaining wall.
So, so there are actually two, two issues with retaining walls on River Street. One is a surf in 1970 mid wall, it's a steel wall that's used to hold the, to back back. And if you look at it, it's huge, that means it's actually got sections of it. So we're looking to get Btrans projects to replace it. And roughly 350 feet down the road on River Street, there's a second hill that really approaches. And it's the old sidewalk panels that were standing on edge to try to hold it back. All of those really need to be full blown Btrans projects, there's probably 600, 700,000 dollars worth of work there. And so we're only looking at an overlay on River Street. Because doing anything more with it prior to that work is unlikely to grow. Also some interim. That's we have to be looking at River Street as a one way and looking at where it's going on. Add a potential wide sharing path on one of the first rivers. So right now, we'll just, we have an exhibition of road. The only thing that's is the blue floor is a one inch overlay because it is so rough.
So I run that up because as the three groups come together, we're talking about if River Street can have this retain wall pushed back a little bit. And making it wider so that you could actually have a path to walk up. And Sam, I think you walk over that way too, but that is.
Really pretty dangerous and I agree, both retaining walls look like any minute after.
Real soft retaining.
It's gonna be a really mess.
This is why having these three groups come together and look at this plan is pivotal. Because we talk about these projects like this that are either for the retaining wall. At the same time, can we make the width of the road a little bit wider to support a path? And then it shouldn't be an overlay or does any other work need to be done? So that's why I think it's crucial that we try to get those three different lenses or perspectives looking at these types of projects together. And Bill, I do, I appreciate that you pulled this all together and I, I do, I look forward to that meeting I hope to attend myself. So other questions that, yes, council stop.
I just have a question about speeding on Berlin Street and Berlin Street, some of the lower sidewalks on Berlin Street. Not on, not on the park at those, oh, from 62 to the park goes down. And I, you know, I see these parts, I think great, but how, how do you assess what needs to be done when? Is that a, is there a process?
So the, the transportation advisory committee is actually, that's one of, one of our market sites. That we're, we've discussed a number of times. One of the things that we're considering is looking at the one way out of that front, River Street. So it could only go out and that, that, that supports our emergency services, doesn't support trucks unless we let the two ways Smith Street. And Urban Street, so one of the options is reduce the amount of traffic on it. And that could allow us to widen sidewalks and put a central bike path on the side. So we connect the Smith Street bike path to the North Main Street roadside by passing. So that's, that's one of the options we've discussed. One of the other options would be look at getting something in the way of a speed table. We have actually discussed when we looked into having fabricated, uh, welcome to Baris North End Sonic to signal the drivers to turn onto. Berlin Street from Vermont 62 to try to remind that this is a day, but so it hasn't been reduced. We had some pricing for it, it's about $90, so yeah, it's well attainable. And we also were adding a 25 mile per hour sign on the right hand side by Mark Lloyd. So signage, looking at whether or not corrosion is used as the current material. And then lastly, doing something to change. The road entrance to remind drivers that this isn't Vermont 62.
Thank you, I, I think there's a problem, there are two businesses, two of the businesses that are on South Line Street. I put a fence up, the gate between the two businesses, so one, they used to all exit on Blackwell, but now some exit on Blackwell, some go up.
The dilemma that the city faces there is that's actually a private piece of private property, it's not a road. And that's why they were fence up.
Right, and, and that's fine, but it does change the traffic.
Changes the dynamics, yeah, and, and so we are seeing. Without that, there's more traffic on, on certain.
Thank you.
Other questions that council might have on those four documents that I've sent out? And you know, if you don't have it now, that's fine, again, there will be a meeting on December 15, probably for the city committee. And I assume that it'll come back before council after that.
Yeah, my, my question is just thinking about how the lining up magic projects of funding sources. Because I think about this, we have the bonds, there's enterprise bonds, we have the general fund transfers to equip. And then there's also the motor group sidewalk, streets, major response. So trying to think about. And local, yeah, I was trying to think about.
And in progress, okay.
Funding sources, so that's where I'm just trying to piece together those things to try and understand. How the money flows to make sure correctly they project.
So, so we actually have three of those sources all integrated by year in a spreadsheet, you know, like for water, sewer, and streets. We have it, although we're aware that we really could break it further. Because the other thing to add to this is prospective grants. And so we're, we're laying it out on a year by year basis with function and funding source. So we can build it out and be able to address that. Right now, that's one is accomplishing. Right now, that's, one is accomplishing about two-thirds of that by giving one number. That's about all I can interpret. For that end, we'll target. And then that's actually drawn from, that has both, both options back. Kind of running handle. We're heading to that.
Other questions? Okay, so before hopping into a conversation on bond, we did have an item that was tabled. And it was a discussion about using any surplus funds. And I didn't know, we wanted to at least understand what that number was. So could I look for a motion to take that off the table? Seconded, all those bear signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed nay? So, Don, do you know, it, it sounded like if we were to go to three percent of the original conversation, we're already below four. But it is three point four percent of it in streets. So if you were to take an amount from our surplus funds to buy this year's budget, what would point four end up looking like? Does, does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
So it's about fifty thousand dollars. So if you were to. Because the original conversation was, there was five hundred eighty-six or so thousand dollars. We allocated some money. There was two hundred thousand in that line item that could be used for future. And we can put that in our ready-made fund. And then a hundred thousand that it was discussed before adding it. So say if we did want to put in fifty thousand for this year, we could reduce that tax rate to two point nine one percent by putting in fifty thousand. Then in the future years, that number could go down to twenty-five, twenty-five. So just as a consideration, so I just want to make sure we brought that back up. This was a motion that was out there to discuss using each portion of it. So I just want to make sure, do we, as a council, want to consider using a portion of those surplus funds to offset that tax rate?
I would like to consider it. I'm not ready to go make a decision right this minute. I want to get out to things like that. I want to leave this workshop, take some time. Re-watch everything that has anything, I'll come back to it, but I don't want to disturb it.
And to note, since before we decided not to take actual action as a vote, this came up as a motion. So at the end of this conversation, if we have a consensus that we're looking at it rather than it's actually a thing, I think that's how we probably have a little. Counselor Wood?
Uh, for, do I need to remove my, my motion for that? I don't know, for, I, I'll just remove it and Carol can work out the details.
Yeah, and Terry was the second there, so are you comfortable with, with drawing?
Oh, yeah, so there, there you go. Thank you for reminding.
Okay. So Steve, it is four o'clock now. We only have a couple more items that were on here. One was the bond status summary detail. Yeah, is that fine? Can you finish that one up and probably call it a day? So this is item six on its list, on the manager's list. And this was basically looking at what we currently have for bonds that are out there. And part of it is.
This is what we do for practice purposes.
So this is.
Uh, we, we completed fifty-six percent of the items in all of the bond. Which is one, two, three, four, five, six. Say ahead of all the budget, we've only expended fifty-two percent, so the relative is correct. And we just. You know, try to work it, I need to go on forward. So I'd be happy to, I realize there's a lot of information there, but this is the way we track it. We track the expenses, we track. Completion, so we can do, Don, does not date every two weeks. But. I know I said it. But I don't know if I said it.
I did not get it.
Yeah, I, I will. Just as you look at this.
I'll send it to the council.
Okay, great.
Full disclosure.
There, there should be two things, right, Jay? You got the memo, summary memo, and then the table?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's. And, and the table has tabs on the bottom for each. Each bond or bonds. So you've got to, you've got to click on the bottom.
So color coding wise, assuming the North Street pump station, since that's something that's kind of underway now, that's a project that's.
Yeah. Yes, that's in process. The color code week is green, is completed, the yellow is in process. Blue is awaiting an RQ preparation. Yellow is on hold for answer here and red is canceled.
Yeah, you said yellow twice, but the first one was, was in a process, which is already.
Gold, yeah.
Yeah, gold. So basically, this is the overview of everything. Previous councils have asked for, the public has been voted yes to, and these are the projects that are in process. I think part of the reason why this is great to bring up is a lot of the work that needs to be completed. I think it's what you just said, it needs to be, we, we, information completed by staff. So as we're having those conversations of who is established to complete it, so Phil, is that you?
Yeah, I think, I think when we put this together, I think, because bills tend to do a lot of. A lot of this force account with the same proof, we just, we have too many projects that not enough staff, we're going to have to. Well, to solicit contractors.
Are other, other pieces done that mark F miles, aren't reported? We actually did get that radio upgrade, our. Fifty-six thousand dollars, we can have all. Replace the stuff, so twenty-five. We budgeted that, we're only trying to get a smaller. We actually have permanent returns. And if you get a font sixty-two right away, we're just unsure when they, this, permanent application. So we have dual pieces that will assemble into something that are not at miles, not percent, really aren't.
So I know this is probably a first look for a lot of people because it was just a doubt. But any questions or thoughts on this as an overview before you start digging into it?
I just had a governance question about this. So when the, when these go before the voters, it's just, the voters are approving them out for a broad description of projects. And then these, these items are amended periodically. And the process for amending those, is that a governing body decision or just a man?
No, sorry, I mean, from my perspective, this is operational, though. The governance issue is decided that the, the bonds have been based on what we've told them to run use the word for. And for instance, go back, if you go back to that radio thing, here's a judgment call. We make these kind of calls every day. The radio upgrades was budgeted twenty thousand dollars across three programs, and I think you just said fifty, six thousand. So, so the choice we have to make is we've got a hard quote, a quote, and we've got something we can recommend. And so do we fragment it and end up with half a wall and not have a complete system upgrade? Or can we say, okay, the voters authorize us to receive a greater upgrades? It's going to cost more than what we have budgeted, but are there savings elsewhere in that bond? Or can we sacrifice something else that's less of a priority? My, my recommendation, we will, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, but I would recommend we get things done. No peace bill. So I, I would be a performer, but Bill would say. If Bill had a reason, say something different. Let's, let's get this one done. Let's change this room for whom to agree.
And I think Don highlighted these because these are actually two items that did come back before council. So Bill had gone out and said, these are the costs, we need to have a paint sprayer. And we're intending to use the funds from the bond.
Yeah, I actually, I guess I should have, to the extent, yeah. I mean, we, we do normally come back to council, you know, they did, they want to say this is. You're asking your approval of entering this contract or make this defenses. No, within the context of a particular cost.
Um, and last question for me on this is, we do not intend to have a bond for anything, correct?
No, I mean, I think we, it's not that we couldn't justify it, but that we've restarted bonding capacity. In terms of where our tax. So it's going to, it's going to depend on grants, our. The enterprise funds. So it's not like there's not funding sources.
Counselor Wood, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to follow up on something that Steve just said about we've met our bonding capacity. It, can you just, are, are we actually at our bonding capacity or is that just a statement that you're making?
That's a generalized statement, I'll just say.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that we don't, we don't want anybody to think that we've hit our bonding capacity.
Oh, I'm in the, from a product management.
Okay, okay.
Elmo is very high. Authorizing more laws only exacerbates that. I just think we need to get some of the state service paid off before we.
So, anything else from anyone?
Well, I'm sorry, just the city hall rearrangement, so the twenty-five thousand dollars for ongoing maintenance, manual operating expense. There's been almost a hundred thousand dollar worth of kind of code upgrades. And now there's going to be this rearrangement that's going to happen. I was just curious, those, those code upgrades happened, not yet.
I mean, I think we've chipped away at it, but there, but there.
So, yeah, there's still, still almost a little under two hundred thousand dollars.
Can't track, Jeff has two RPs that he's even preparing, a little prepare for installing fire door downstairs. We need to. That's a COVID crisis. We also need to continue to boil the operations, we can come out at twenty-five thousand. Rearrangement, we've budgeted, I just arbitrarily gave the number a hundred thousand. We will, Rick, I think is it, because. Magnanimously become the project manager for the rearrangement, it's just such a complex. Initiative, so we've got the plan reconciled. We will be coming to the council to update briefly about the rearrangement. I would move ahead with that without making sure council was aware, on board.
What is the rearrangement?
It's, it's really, fundamentally, it's driven by the, the old police station, which is virtually vacant. Now, over the last few years, we've made use of what we call the back four, it's the hallway that goes out back. Janet's office, there's an office there that Janet did use for a long time. Now she's in the assessors' office.
We did a charter room.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, frame it over time, with functional, yeah. Compulsory, whatever, but that's just, that was just sort of, we responded to the need at the time. We really need to have a well thought out plan. And part of it involves, part of the intent is to get the departments consolidated. Right now, we have, we have department heads who weren't in their work experience. Getting, getting department heads consolidated with staff, I mean, basic improvements in that, Don, now is, is a murder. Just operational efficiencies, we're trying to improve public service. With the, you know, right now, somebody wants to come in. Carol can do the living, but pay the, the liquid tax or whatever, they go to three different places, they're trying to consolidate that.
Efficiency from again.
Yeah.
My, my guess is that, I know Ricky said he wants to do it before, if you can, or probably through it, but I. Right back, probably he says, I think on behalf of the first of the year. If, if Rick moves along, great.
Any other questions? Seeing that, the last question is, does council feel like we need to have another budget meeting? A day set for just these conversations? Or do you think that with the spot that we're at right now, that we could actually handle this within a budget, within a council meeting coming up?
Mike, as manager, I'd like to recommend you hold one more session. It doesn't have to be three hours or whatever, but I think you try to deal with the budget. And specific line item justice, in the context of the council, I think invariably ends up being last thing on the agenda, everybody's tired. I think it's better to be scheduled, it doesn't have to be next week, maybe a couple of weeks, a Saturday morning, maybe a couple of hours. I think you made a lot of progress, actually more than I ever. But my recommendation would be one more, one more dedicated session.
Yeah, I agree with Steve.
Yeah. So can we try to find anything, just make sure it's on the calendar?
December eighteenth.
What time?
Uh, well, that, that's, it's two weeks from today.
Yeah.
I'd say just nine.
I can't.
Are you, are you talking earlier or later?
I, I don't know, I, I was just, you like, I have things I do it now.
I mean, if, if it happens.
Get or done.
I can't do any of that.
So here's, and, and here's where we get to the, we, if we run out of time eventually, so. Counselor, real, if it didn't work for everybody else, we'd be fine if we met.
I'm absolutely fine. If, if everybody else can be that day, it's, it's just we're running into the holidays.
Yeah.
So, yeah. No, everybody else can be, that's fine with me.
So does December eighteenth work for everybody else?
Michael, nine o'clock?
He's taking yes, but do you want me to dine or do you want me to do it?
So noon.
I don't care either. I don't care. Maybe a quarter.
Okay, we'll call it noon on December eighteenth.
I'm a holiday couple.
Okay. Anybody else, any other thoughts?
If y'all want to go to my in-laws instead.
Okay, so, so as we, as we, as we say that, your homework assignment for the next session is to individually go through the spreadsheets you have and just identify items. Consider expense reductions or changes there.
So one adjustment then, and Larry, just to key in on this too. We had mentioned the twenty-first to have an information by, if you can have the information on that grant for the detective by the eighteen. Just because that's what we just elected to be, same thing, Don and Steve, for the VOR analysis. Okay. So, is there something else, a little promotion feature? Although it's a favor? Thank you very much, everybody.